Good evening and welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2024. It is 6:01 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. With that, I would ask you to please rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I am the leader of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Please be seated. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
President.
Vice Mayor Danko.
And proceed. The first item on our agenda this evening will be proclamations and presentations. And I would ask my fellow council members if we could reorder the agenda. The Commissioner for FIND, the Florida Inland Navigation District, is here to present an offering to the city and is on a tight schedule. If it's okay with you, I'll move that up.
Bring a check?
Well, if you'll wait and see for a minute, we'll get there.
Okay.
We'll put that up with the presentations if that fits your agenda this evening, okay? So with that, I would ask staff to please proceed with number 10 on your agenda, which would be under letter H, titled "Resolutions."
My name is Alyssa Roscoe. I'm your Solid Waste Residential Collection Supervisor. And today, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the 2024 Intracoastal Waterway Cleanup. We'll be doing a short presentation today before we speak to Commissioners Stapleford, go over a few items. Our mascot for the 2024 -- it's too far away. Our mascots are always a huge part of our intracoastal waterway cleanup. It is a way to tie in the fun, as well as the responsibility and the environmental impact that these events have. We always go out to our community to figure out a name for our mascot. This year, we went to the summer camp and Commissioner Stapleford joined James Hurst and I, and we polled the children and to see what type of name they would come up with. And this year, for our 2024 mascot, the Soft Shell Turtle, the name was given of Pearl. All the counselors, I'm sorry, all the campers suggested different options. There was Stanley, Sheldon, Timmy T., but Pearl was ultimately our winner. So this is Pearl. She'll be our mascot this year. Our event will be held on the 21st of September. That's a couple Saturdays away from now. Typically, this is conducted in conjunction with the International Coastal Cleanup Day. We target saltwater canals, the intracoastal waterway, and waterways along parks and trails. This helps us expand our awareness for litter-all effort and impact. Registration is currently open, and we'll be meeting here at the Community Center at 8:00 AM on Saturday, the 21st. This is the 17th year FIND has assisted us and granted, given us the grant totaling $85,000 thus far. We also have sponsorships that were available to other partners in the community, of which we did have a couple takers. But FIND remains our biggest sponsor for this event. There are multiple social media posts that will be going out, letting residents know how they can get involved and interact, whether that be fun facts about our friend Pearl, the Soft Shell Turtle, to how they can canoe and kayak on the water to help remove that debris. Also, we're passing out flyers to the school board, as well as local community groups, letting them know that this event is eligible for volunteer hours. There'll be a free lunch and a free tee-shirt for participating. This year, we're also bringing back the community after-party. So that was something that was a really big push for us this year to make sure that not only are we out there, is a community being engaged in picking up that debris, but also coming back for those awards and that food and that community fun and feel. So after the event ends at noon, we invite you to stay with us at the Community Center to talk about all of our fun, unique finds, as well as, you know, different ways to be impactful in the community. After that, on October 15th, we'll revisit council to go over the event results. Did you guys have any questions in regard to this?
Any questions?
Well, this is a privilege I get to do once a year and glad to see the numbers are mounting at 85,000. Randy Stapleford, Commissioner of Florida Inland Navigational District. So again, this is a privilege we get to do to work with the city and to work with all the folks in our community. And the naming of the mascot, as we just discussed, that was awesome to have over at the Palm Coast Community Center with all those young kids making artwork and drawing them out and then coming up with a selection for the mascot. So I hope to see everybody in our audience out there. If you'd like to come up and pick up items from the seashore or from, not the seashore, but from the intracoastal waterway, there are treasures out there to be found. And some have been found already and turned in and artifacts that we take care of. But we want to clean up the city and clean up the waterway. It's so important to our life in this wonderful city and wonderful county we live in. So on behalf of the Florida Inland Navigational District, it's my privilege to present this check for $5,000.
And I'll go ahead and read that right here from the podium. We have a full house. I'm sorry, from the dais. Brittany, could you ask those that are -- okay, very good, all right. Did you want to join them? Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. And whereas this year approximately 288,300 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States, and roughly 34,700 will die from the disease, which is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas prostate cancer not only affects men, but also deeply affects the families and friends of those who love them. And whereas in 1999, the American Foundation of Urological Diseases declared that each September be designated as National Prostate Health Cancer Month to educate men on strategies for prevention, detection, and diagnosis of this dreadful disease. And whereas, as a component of the 2024 national campaign, the Prostate Cancer Foundation encourages men to power up your health by practicing suitable nutrition and exercise strategies to reduce the risk of disease progression. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that September 2024 be officially designated as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Carl, would you like to say a word?
Yeah, I'll say a few words. Carl Cody, Director of Stonewall Engineering. I want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for recognizing September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. This is a disease that, you know, needs more awareness out there. It is something that impacts a lot of people. One in every eight men will be diagnosed with this at some time in their lifetime, every man. So it is the leading cause of death in 49 countries for cancer as well. And, you know, one thing that we do have here tonight, we have a pamphlet by the front door. It's called "Things Every Man Should Know About Prostate Cancer." You know, it typically affects older gentlemen, but it seems to be affecting more and more younger folks. And the signs aren't always known to you. And knowing what those are, and when you hit 40, beginning, having that testing done, speak with your doctor, know what your PSA levels are, you know, and those annual checkups are critical, even though you feel perfect, the signs may be there or not there. You know, always continue to get, have those annual physicals, begin your prostate cancer check, and learn what you can about prostate cancer, just for that awareness, because it does affect so many folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Anything additional? Councilman Pontieri, would you like to add a comment?
I would, thank you. Thank you, Carl, for coming up here and saying those words. This is really important that we do this and that we just put this awareness out in our community, because there are a lot of people that lose their lives, that lose loved ones from this disease. I lost my uncle just a few years ago to it. So thank you, and thank you, council.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. So again, we will, yeah, come on up. We'll acknowledge, we'll acknowledge the official proclamation today. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, award presentation from the Cedar Bridge Foundation. Go ahead, you can clap for it. Go ahead. No, the other way. Yeah. There you go.
Where's Carrie Todd? Because that's the person we're honoring today. Where is she? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us, Mayor and council members. My name is Maria Darling, and this is Terri Baker. Together, we co-founded Cedar Bridge Foundation, a nonprofit organization committed to enriching the lives of individuals with special needs through advocacy, support, socialization, and programs. We're joined tonight by many of our members, many who couldn't come. There was, I think we all, I encountered rain coming here, but some of you did come, and thank you for coming as well. These are outstanding men and women and their families who navigate exceptional needs daily. Tonight, we're excited to honor Carrie Todd from Parks and Recreation Department for her commitment to the special needs community. Couple of years ago, I met Carrie. She started the Autism Spectrum Disorder ASD Group at the Palm Coast Community Center, which now welcomes many of our members every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. As a co-founder, or as co-founders of Cedar Bridge Foundation and parents of adults with disability, we know the unique challenges and profound rewards of supporting individuals with exceptional needs. It takes a person of immense compassion, resilience, and vision to truly make a difference. Carrie exemplifies all these qualities and more. Her commitment to empowering those with disabilities and enhancing their lives has been nothing short of inspirational. She has not only raised awareness, but she's also fostered a sense of community, a sense of inclusion, and a sense of empowerment. Carrie's work aligns seamlessly with our mission. Her dedication has helped bridge the gap between challenges and possibilities, paving the way to a more inclusive community. Her work has shown us all the power of dedication, but more importantly, the beauty of a community that stands together. We would also like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Palm Coast Parks and Recreation Department for their incredible staff, and their incredible staff for their support. Their commitment has been instrumental in creating a supportive environment for individuals with special needs. Now, it is my honor and great pleasure to present Carrie Todd with this plaque in recognition of her outstanding service. Please join us in giving a round of applause to a true champion, an extraordinary individual who has made the world a better place. Thank you, Carrie.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Palm Coast 25th Anniversary Celebration. And just an announcement, Councilman Clufus is joining us virtually and is now connected to the meeting.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I had a little difficulty, but I think I have everything sorted now. Thank you.
All right, I wish you the best, Councilman. Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you, given the circumstances. I appreciate it.
All right. With that, I'll, ladies, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us. I'm Brittany McDermott, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm joined here by Gina Cantolano. She's our Community Recreation Supervisor in charge of all of our special events in collaboration with several other city departments. You may have already seen some of the event promotions that went out from our Communications and Marketing Department on the city's 25th Anniversary Celebration. Gina's going to take you through a presentation that covers more of the details of that event. So I'm going to turn it over to her, and I will be available to assist with any questions.
Thank you, Brittany, and good evening, council and everyone here. Thank you for having us. But yes, so as Brittany mentioned, we are here to talk about this great milestone of our city, celebrate our community, and as Brittany mentioned, collaborate with our Marketing and Communications Department, the Palm Coast Historical Society, and Rotary Club as well. So in honor of our city's growth, diversity, community spirit, we really want to find a way to bring residents together and honor this milestone that we have, reflecting on Palm Coast's unique character, highlighting key moments in Palm Coast history with storytelling and events, and encouraging participation throughout the community with activities and inspiring residents to continue to contribute to our growth and highlight those moments that we all truly love and really showcase the City of Palm Coast. So we're going to start by incorporating 25th Anniversary elements into pre-existing events. So we're going to focus on grassroots marketing, bring awareness and celebration throughout the community with different organizations and within the city as well. We're planning to have a branded themed display at various events that have already been planned throughout the fall and winter season. So really encompassing that onsite spirit with, you know, again, just honoring that history and highlighting what our great city has grown to become. One of those ways is to call back to what made us fall in love with Palm Coast: golf, tennis, and boating. So again, highlight those existing events that we have and, you know, possibly bring in another one or two that encompass these items that really made us fall in love with this city. We are going to partner with our Palm Coast Model Boat Club to be a part of our big celebration and continue to support our Palm Coast Yacht Club's annual boat parade and as well highlight and be present at our current golf, tennis, and pickleball events with our themed displays, again, bringing awareness to this awesome milestone and the events that we have. One of our current features that we have already in Linear Park is a story walk. So one way we're going to bring this vision and this story to life is the month of September, we have featured a Palm Coast 25th Anniversary themed story walk at Linear Park, which will highlight key moments in history along the path. The last piece of that story walk will highlight, showcase, and invite residents to our big celebration in the Central Park in October. With that being said, bringing us to celebrate in the park, we're going to be hosting a very large festival-style event in Central Park on Saturday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM in celebration of our 25th Anniversary. So taking us through the event a little bit more specifically. So this is an overview of our, basically, our event and our site plan. So I'll break down each zone a little bit more specifically. This can be a lot, I'm sure, to take in all at once, but we are planning to host an event that is free to the public, that will have something for all ages there. Our different zones break up different interacting, interactions and elements that we want to focus on, and again, highlight for all different ages. So our Zone 1 is going to welcome guests, welcome residents, it's going to have information. We're going to have our Parks and Recreation there, our Historical Society there, and we're going to have photo ops in that section. And then that leads to Zone 2, which will take us to our food trucks and tables for seating. So we are highlighting first Palm Coast and Flagler County food trucks. So again, you know, really want to showcase our city, so bringing in our local flavor and supporting local. Then that will take us to Zone 3, which is basically our kids' zone. We're going to have various different interactive activities for all ages of our youth, and everything from the interactive games to inflatables to face painting. So it's a little bit something for everybody. We are planning to charge for that area with the proceeds going back to our Historical Society. And then leading us to our last zone, which is Zone 4, and that's going to be where our main stage is going to be. We're going to have a live band, again, a stage, some seating. We are going to have some bars onsite. And we are also planning to have various city departments represented and onsite with different booths, providing information and in support of the event. This is our general event timeline as of now. So as mentioned, the event is from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock. And throughout this, this is more so for that stage and that entertainment piece. A couple things I want to highlight on here, we are going to have an onsite DJ, a live band, we'd love some opening remarks from our mayor, and we are going to highlight various community groups with performances. So again, really bringing in that, the culture and the flavor and what we love about Palm Coast with our community groups performing right there at the stage, and then again, having that live band as well. Another piece that we thought could be, you know, really great part of history is a small time capsule, and of course, a birthday cake, because it is our anniversary and birthday. So with the time capsule, you know, we're planning a small ceremony and presentation there at the stage, which will encompass, you know, small elements from history that will be contributed through different partners and organizations within the community. And then we would love to have that time capsule on display for our next future and Why stop there? So our celebration continues after our big October party, leading into our winter events. We want to continue that ongoing effort to bring awareness and celebrate this milestone that our city has by incorporating more of these themed displays and giveaways into our winter holiday events. So again, really encompassing that this theme and this celebration throughout the rest of the year. We are planning to be a part of our annual boat parade and of course, support our Fantasy Lights Festival as well with different displays. And then lastly, we have custom 25th Anniversary holiday ornaments that will be given away at various events as well. So thank you all for your time. If you all had any questions.
Any questions from council?
I have none.
I have a suggestion.
Absolutely.
And I issue a challenge to my fellow council members and our B.O.C.C. as well, our commissioners. If the proceeds for Zone 3, which is the kids' zone with all the games and things like that, are going to go to our Historical Society, I would suggest we get a dunking booth, and maybe we charge to allow our residents to dunk some of our public officials.
Okay.
If the money goes to the Historical Society, I'm willing to do it. You can mark my words here.
Okay, I was just going to ask if you were volunteering.
No, I volunteer everybody else. No, I'm willing to do it.
Been there, done that, I have experience.
I believe you. But no, I'm really excited about this. I think it's great. This is a really cool milestone for our city that we often call very young, but with old bones. I think this is a really cool event, and I'm excited for it.
I think we should extend this to staff, too, not just us.
You know what? They're probably going to be busy that day.
Councilman Clufus, any question?
Nope, I think that idea is a slam dunk, pun intended.
All right, good. Feels like you're right here.
He's funny when he's even not here, right?
Absolutely. All right, wonderful presentation, and I assume there will be much more PR on social media as we get closer to the date, so that everybody, in addition to those kind folks that are here tonight, would be aware of the celebration. Do we have a record to break in terms of a turnout? I'll let you find that out for us, and we would, as another challenge, see if we can't exceed whatever numbers we've ever had for a prior event in town center before. So we'll look forward to that as well. So ladies, thank you very much.
Awesome. Challenge accepted. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
We'll now move forward to public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications Marketing Director seated, standing in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. With that, let me open, and one other comment. Your public comments in this section are reserved for comments that are not part of the following agenda. So with that, the podium is open for public comment? Yes, sir?
Daniel Seaman, Seminole Woods. We had a very heated discussion with council and you as well, Mayor, about the building or the lack thereof apartments in Seminole Woods. We came to an agreement. It's going to stay single-family houses. Part of that agreement was that there was supposed to be a buffer between the neighborhood being built and Seminole Woods Road. The developer has gone in there and taken The developer has gone in there and taken every single tree down in the area that is being developed. Not one is left standing. Um, excuse me, inside of that buffer, there's not one left standing. Um, there, there has, there's some oak trees further back, but I'm assuming those are coming down, but I don't know, but it's irrelevant. Um, the, the buffer that was supposed to be there to create or to leave that ambiance for Seminole Woods is not there. So, I would like, um, you, Mayor, or the council, or whatever department in the city needs to, to, to look into those permits and find out why that buffer was not, um, adhered to because, um, quite frankly, I think they need to put trees back, you know, to make it right. Because it, it, I don't know if you've driven down Seminole Woods since they started clear, now I understand those are pine trees and it's pulp wood, that's fine, but as long as there's a plan to put trees back and, and create that, recreate that buffer, that's fine. We've tried to find it in public information and have been unable to do so. Um, so, maybe make that a little easier to find for us, we can look at those plans and, um, I mean, it's, it, it literally looks like they took a bush hog in there and took trees, took, took, took the bush hog to the trees. I mean, it, it, they took them all. So, that's my public comment, I would really like, uh, to be able to find those answers. It's almost, I don't want to say they're hidden, but it's not very easy to find information about what's happening there, uh, and that's it, thank you.
All right, I appreciate your comment, thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Jeffrey Seib. The recent tax discussions by the city council and the information presented by city staff paints a relatively good picture of city taxes declining over the last five years. The proposed millage rate of 4.1893 for a home valued at $250,000 with a $50,000 homestead exemption would be charged a city tax levy of $838. This amount is then included in the total ad valorem taxes, which includes county taxes, school board, and others like St. John's River Water Management District. This is what we pay each year. For your hypothetical $250,000, $50,000 homestead exemption example, the total tax liability comes out to $3,643. For a $400,000 home with a $50,000 exemption, the city tax bill is $1466, and the total tax bill is $6,375. Our city taxes may go down, but that will not go on forever. As the numbers of new residents continues to increase and the services needed like police, fire, utilities, roads, and infrastructure costs increase, the picture will be different from declining taxes in the city. This will add to the increasing cost of living here. So, the lowest we can make the millage rate now is the starting point for next year's taxes. At a recent city council meeting on taxes, Vice Mayor Danko proposed the rollback millage rate of 3.9961. City staff presented a rate of 4.2194. I propose a rate of 4.1078 as a compromise midway between the two. That rate for the $250,000 home would result in a city tax of $817, slightly lower than the $838 city staff called for. The total tax bill for that $250,000 home with my lower city millage rate would be $3552 versus $3,643. Savings in the city operation, operating budget should be achieved by reducing the amount of growth in city operations in areas other than police, fire, stormwater, utilities, roads, and other infrastructural needs. As I look at the city budget as presented, increases of close to and more than 20% should be reduced in the following departments. City managers, uh, manager and city clerk's office, almost a 20% increase. Communications, 19%. Human resources, 19%, and economic development, 22%. This growth will result in higher taxes in the coming years. These increases should be lowered to less than 10%. It all adds up.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, uh, please, 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 all right. Give, give that, excuse me. Please give each speaker their full three minutes, so just hold the applause. Yes, sir?
Uh, Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. I want to reiterate what a previous speaker said about the, the trees that were being cut down on, along Seminole Woods. The part of that is, it's, there's a sign that says Tree City, and we're cutting the trees down. We fought this, that there would be a buffer, and these people need to be fined if they're not, if they're not going to hon, honor the, the agreement that was made. Uh, the other thing I want to speak about is, uh, we just had a primary and a lot of candidates, you know, spent a lot of money on signs. And, of course, we have so many days that, you know, when you're eliminated, uh, I lost my two votes, uh, but, uh, but, uh, so afterwards, two days after the recount, uh, I went out to get my signs and there were massive signs being taken up by somebody. It's not the city, because I checked with the city, so they're clean, but somebody's out there stealing people's signs, so we paid good money for those. Uh, and I'd like to think that, uh, because I know we have 15 days to, uh, get our signs up. Now, of course, now, in my case, I think we get a little more than that because our recount was until the Saturday after the election, same with, uh, yours. Uh, so we get a little extra time, but I hope that, and there's a lot of people that have signs still up, then I hope they get them, get them taken up because they, they lost. Uh, and, because I got mine up, uh, everybody else needs to get theirs up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please, all right, all right. Next speaker, please. Go ahead, you can go ahead and kind of queue up a little bit for, uh, speaking, please.
Tommy Michael, W Section. I'd just like to make a comment. I'm grateful they're repaving the road on, uh, Pine Lakes, but whoever hired the construction company really got to take a second look at them. Today, as we were driving, they're rerouting us down a side street, 20 minutes out of our way to bring us in a big loop to bring us back on the Pine Lakes, where now they want us to turn back and start to where we came from. I mean, and they, and they said, hey, this is what we're supposed to do. So, I called the police department, non-emergency number, and I said, excuse me? I says, but maybe we need an officer here to direct traffic. Normal construction people have a little stop sign and they let traffic come one way, put the stop sign, then the traffic will go the other way. Nope, all the guy says, hey, do what the hell you want, that's what the guy said. I says, you're routing people back to where you started from and then you want us to turn again? So, the police department told me they had multiple, multiple calls because there was almost accidents happening because as they're trying to have people go the other way, people were cutting around them and trying to get through. So, they, police department says they went out there, talked to the gentleman, the gentleman told the police department, I don't know what, but they says they will no longer respond to take it up with the city. So, as I'm saying, it's whoever hired them, okay, they need to talk to them and give them the rules on how to direct traffic and maybe give them a stop sign from one of the school districts or something. Because I, I wasted almost a half hour of my day and my gas for nothing. It's just incompetence of whoever hired them.
Thank you for your comment.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Couple of weeks ago, a friend of mine, her name is Melissa Fuling, came here with, um, Flagler Warriors. Now, for those people in the audience that are not familiar with Flagler Warriors, it's an organization for families who would have children with cancer. And right now, as we stand in Palm Coast and Flagler Beach, there's like 35 or 40 kids that have cancer in, just in this Flagler County. Well, Melissa came and there was a proclamation made and there was, we were told that the, um, signs were going to be put up. Well, fast forward it a couple of weeks, now comes Friday of this past week, no signs. So, I called the city. Well, it was like, well, let me check with them, let me check with them, let me check with them. Well, finally, they came back and they said the signs are going to go up this afternoon. Great. So, I called Melissa and I said, congratulations, the signs are up, they're going to be up for the month of September. Well, the problem is that the city now wants to charge me to put the signs up. Well, that's not going to work because you just heard this young lady give this big presentation about this 25th anniversary, but nobody's said yet how much it's going to cost us to have this big celebration. Now, you got all these other fiascos that we've done over the last four or five years, the Green Lion Inn, the Community Center, the Flash Park, the Splash Park, we've got all these fiascos, oh, the tennis and pickleball court, but yet, we can't, the city can't turn around and say to Melissa, who by the way, takes all the money and donates it to Live Like Cameron, because Cameron, unless you don't know, Cameron was her son, and he was the first one to die, okay? And that to me, it's personal, okay? I never got to meet Cameron, but I feel that I know him through his mother. And the work that this woman has put in and not accepted a dime, but yet the city has the, be nice, Robert, has the audacity and the gall to charge this woman to use the, the park in this, in, in Palm Coast and put a couple of signs up. Are you people flipping crazy? Well, I want this, I want the fee, whatever it is, because nobody can tell me who imposed the fee, because I'd like the, I'd like the person to stand here and tell me to my big ugly face, yes, I'm the one that's responsible for fining this woman. Because I don't think anybody in this room has got enough moxie to come up here and stand here in front of all these people and tell them that, yeah, the decision came from me. That is, be nice, that is a load of crap. Okay, I'm trying to be politically nice, okay? Now, I want somebody right now up here to say...
No, this is public comment, Bob, you know that.
Excuse me?
This is public comment, I will have the city manager get back to you, and your three minutes are expired.
Is it going to be before the 22nd? Because that's when the, because that's when the...
Bob, your, your three minutes are expired and we have other speakers, so we will follow up with you on that issue.
Oh, I know you will.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mark Webb, District 4. Um, I was present at the 27th meeting when you were discussing your options of filling the District 4 seat, and I'm here tonight to ask for clarification of one of the information bases that were shared. There were three options. One, held an election. Too short, understood it was clear. Two, put it off within the 90 days of when the election's completed, November 5th. The acting city manager said that wouldn't work, 109 days to December 5th. Odd. The third one was the one y'all have chosen, of which you're aggressively trying to get it filled and seated by October 1st. I am asking for a review of option two because I believe that we will be well within the 90 days on November 22nd, which is the third Tuesday of November, to seat the city council members that could, if you chose, to allow the new elected council members to choose our district seat four. And for the record, I'm not running for it, my name's not in it, I just want to have clarification to understand that the city is doing the right thing by the voting people that have decided. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Chantal Prehninger and I live in Section Z. When you drive your car in a, any stock, you have along the roads a, a white line, and that line is meant for you to look at when you have cars on the opposite side coming with bright flashing lights. On, um, wide view pathway, you can barely see those lines. So, if somebody could take notes of that and just put some paint on those, that would be really helpful, especially when I look at something that was posted by the city of Palm Coast on Facebook today, that say that they just put, um, a bridge in a place and they are very proud to have the golfers back enjoying the new take on the 18th hole stable. So, um, what I'm saying here is priorities, please think about priorities, and, and having those signs would be really nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Cornelia Downing-Manfree. I wanted to come to the city council and ask you to reconsider about this referendum that you have, uh, planned for the ballot. Um, I'm very concerned that 25 years ago, our founding fathers decided that we would have a cap and a timeframe on any borrowing power. The proposed language of eliminating number, uh, the 3E from, um, Article 6 of the Charter leaves it very open-ended. The other oddity in this language is that it says that the ability to address the group will have future residents contributing to this infrastructure cost, et cetera. So, does that mean the future residents will get a tax bill plus another bill for this, uh, having to pay any kind of bond issuance that's taken? The language is very confusing and I think it needs to be reconsidered. The bonds, when they're not, when we do not have sufficient funds from our tax collections, you may need to go to bond for infrastructure. However, your, your bonding, like your mortgage on your home or a credit card rate, those are specific in use rate and the term. This language is extremely open-ended. Bond issuance also would be using to mortgage the future of the community. To change the charter, eliminating a cap on borrowing is not necessary and should be left for the incoming council to address. Therefore, I'm asking that this referendum, in its vagueness, be stricken from the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Jeannie Duarte. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Alvin, for telling me to read the Charter. The current Charter provision, 3E, reads as follows. Unless authorized by the electors of the city at a duly-held referendum election, the council shall not enter into lease purchase contracts or any other unfunded multi-year contracts, the repayments of which extends in excess of 36 months or exceeds $15 million. I made the mistake of reading the posture of this proposed amended language for the ballot as if it were a suggestion, when indeed it is not. It's your intentions. Your proposed language for the ballot reads, "Shall Article 6 of the Charter be amended by removing provisions 3E related to fiscal contracting authority that limit the city's ability to enter into public-private partnership." That right there eliminates our voice and our right to vote, as well as eliminates the $15 million cap and the 36-month repayment deadline. Then in a roundabout way, it goes on to say that the city will have the ability to address growth by having future residents contribute to infrastructure costs, respond to emergencies, and use available finances, financial instruments, including but not limited to bonds. So, you are telling us, for the purpose of expansion, that you want to bankrupt Palm Coast? That's your intentions? With us, the citizens of Palm Coast, not having a voice...
Allow the speaker to have her three minutes, please.
With us, the ci, thank you, with us, the citizens of Palm Coast, not having a voice and not, and having no vote, and you have an exclusive power and no, no accountability, this screams of voter suppression. Mayor Alvin, Ms. Pontier, she's an attorney, moving this statement from thought to ballot is extreme... More than this statement from thought to ballot is extremely disturbing. We have heard her push for commercial growth, and there's nothing wrong with that, but she openly admitted to her involvement in writing this, and for this, she cannot be trusted. May I remind you, you are sitting in a public servant seat on the behalf of the people of Palm Coast. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Please direct your comments to me. Thank you.
And that's a no to Alvin Bonds.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Please hold the applause so that each speaker gets a full three minutes. Go ahead.
A greeting, City Council, Andrew, Palm Coast. I just wanted to address the empty chair. There are two empty chairs tonight, but I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Hyder for service to our city. Just tell a quick story. My favorite event that I attended last year was the Flagler County Veterans Day Parade. At the end of the event, a man sang a song, "I'm Proud to be an American." Under the tent where the elected officials sit, many of you guys were there, Ms. Hyder could be seen waving an American flag with her typical big smile. It was a great moment of patriotism and just a great display of love for our country, so I'm very thankful. Thank you, Ms. Hyder. But her resignation leaves us in a tough spot to find her replacement. I'm a little disappointed by the council's passive dismissal of the option of holding a special election. See, I'm a candidate, and I've had to work hard for my support. I've also had to take on criticism. Both I consider a great honor, part of the privilege of running for public office, and an honor I would not want to deprive anyone sitting up on that dais. But the vote was made to appoint the next candidate, and I think that we can still find a great candidate in this process. I'll give the example of our most recent appointee, John Finelli, someone who I would vote for tomorrow if he was on the ballot. So we can find good candidates through this process, too, even though it wasn't my preference. So I would encourage the city to use our marketing budget to inform the public as much as possible, so we can all be a part of the process each and every step of the way. And I would encourage the people of Palm Coast to show up and show up, participate, and make your voice heard. And I'll leave you with the words of Thomas Jefferson. The government will not be run by the majority, but the government will be run by the majority who participate. So please participate, and thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Candy Stevens, P Section. I'm actually a little bit shocked right now. One of my questions today was, who wrote the language in that change? Because it's so unclear, so muddy. It's just not clear. If you read the initial reading like she read it and then how it's written, it's like a sentence paragraph. It's a sentence that's a paragraph, and it seems like it's meant to mislead. So you guys can't let that, it's not going to get passed, because nobody's going to vote yes for it the way it's worded. You've got to word it different. It's not right for anybody that's in legislation to pass anything that's going to be for more than their term, maybe a double their term, but something that's going to go for 25 years. These kind of bonds that we're talking about will be long-term bonds. A lot of you guys will be gone. Most of us will still be here. You've also got a lot of people that have money, like you, Mayor. Once your term's over in a couple months, you might just leave Palm Coast and go where you came from. A lot of people don't have that option. So some of these things that you're passing and asking us to vote for, none of us have any right to be voting for stuff that far out into the future. The city doesn't have the money for it. We can't even do our infrastructure correctly, and you guys want to do these junk bonds for some fake something or other that you're going to build out west that's going to be vacant like the one that's next to my house now? If you guys want to ask for money for bonds, ask for what you really want the bond money for, first of all. Right? Be straight up, ask us. If you want it to build out west, ask us and let us tell you no, because we will tell you that. If you want it for infrastructure, we'll tell you yes, we will. But we're not going to give you any more money for anything else other than that, and that's a big if on that, because we've already paid enough. So you need to start listening again. I know you're on your way out, and I know you're the only one staying, and I have a lot of faith in you, and I have since the very beginning, but if you did have any writing of that, can you please go back and change it? Before it goes on the ballot, because it's not going to get passed. And I just want to remind everybody in this room something. Once a tax is added to you, they don't take it away. Once your vote is taken away, they don't give it back. Vote no.
Thank you for your comment. Please, please, please. Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Darlene Shelley, Palm Coast. Just two comments here. First, I'd like to request not to rewrite the change to the Charter, but to remove it from the ballot. It's too late. It's too confusing. It's derived from a council that, for the most part, is going to be out. So please remove it from the ballot. Obviously, the folks in Palm Coast are against it and, quite frankly, confused by it. I think you've underestimated the citizens, and we request that it is removed from the ballot. Another concern I'd like to bring up, as you are well aware, because I send you many emails, and I'm just trying to bring awareness to it, because I think a lot of citizens don't realize why there's so much noise above their homes from airplanes. They think that perhaps it's planes going from one place to another, but in fact, it's from training flights from airports that are for-profit schools. The Flagler Executive Airport is a county-owned, public-use, general aviation airport that's operated and maintained under the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. The airport is located entirely within the city of Palm Coast and is closely surrounded by schools, retail businesses, a hospital, and thousands of homes and apartments. Thousands of Palm Coast residents are having their home values lowered, their quality of life diminished, and safety and health and welfare threatened by the hundreds of daily touch-and-go maneuvers executed by student pilots by for-profit flight schools. Palm Coast gets nothing in return. Only 720 pounds of lead polluted annually, unsafe decibels of noise, and the loss of our rights to peace and quiet in our own homes. If there were impact fees assessed on these flight schools, the amount would be incalculable. Despite years of requests from the residents, Flagler County has not stepped up to help us. The city claims it's a county issue. The FAA states they only have jurisdiction of planes in the air. The residents of Palm Coast have the right to peace and quiet in our own homes, clean air and water, and an environment free of constant noise and nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Last meeting, Ed mentioned that if we don't like the person you appoint to the vacancy, we can just vote them out in two years. My response was that too much damage could be done between now and then. Of course, a recall could be an option, but that, building on that, likewise, right now, there was too much damage that could be done between now and the end of your terms, particularly this issue of borrowing an unlimited amount of money through the sale of bonds without our approval. The language on the proposal is intentionally misleading, deceptive, and thanks to Ed, we were able to figure out what it really meant. Now, Ms. Teresa backed him up in his opposition, but failed to make a second motion to rectify the language and situation. Big issues like this, and anything relating to building of multifamily housing and housing developments, that is, overpriced cookie cutter homes, should not be entertained or voted on for the rest of your terms. The calculation for the stadium, you can look on PC Loudmouth, but what it comes down to is that we're paying the city, paying Synergy Group, Swartz Group, to turn a profit so they can return pennies back to the city. So it doesn't look like a good return on investment. Now, as far as the western expansion is concerned, I said this before, give us useful everyday needs like a gas station, convenience store, food market, family restaurants, and businesses that will create jobs, that will alleviate traffic on this side of town, on the center part of town. Neighborhood streets could be built, just like we have now, where you buy a lot and you build a house that you want on that lot, not these crappy cookie cutter houses. How about a go-kart and miniature golf? Start with that and expand a little bit, all right? So let's get, can we get back the money that was accidentally on purpose given towards western expansion rather than for our roads as it was intended? As far as vague language, it's amended for that's coming up in November. That's another example of confusing languages that will force people to vote opposite of what they want. So let's get this language cleared up so we can all know what it's talking about, and don't vote on any of these big issues until you're out of here. Let them, let the new administration take care of it. And finally, what's going on with Route 100? Like, they stopped, and now you've got traffic backed up because there's no turn lanes on Old Kings. So I hope they can speed that up there. And why didn't they put a night crew on Pine Lakes instead of doing it during the day?
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Regine Burnier. I live in the R section. I spoke a few years ago about the swimming pool, the Olympic swimming pool, for the city of Palm Coast. When I arrived here 13 years ago, we had three pools, Frida Zamba, Fitness One, Belt Air, and Swim Racquet Club. We, a group of 275 seniors, have helped Belt Air Swim Racquet Club to improve it, not only for the seniors of Palm Coast, but for everyone. As we find out this year, the school took the seniors away from our beautiful Belt Air Swim and Racquet Club. Now we only have one pool left, which is Frida Zamba. I think that the city of Palm Coast deserves better for the swimmer who love Palm Coast. I, myself, can only swim because of my health issue. I feel that if you could consider caring for the senior who loves swimming in the pool to do something about it. I find out, and I don't know if it's true, that you had opened a ground near, I don't remember the place, toward Old Kings Road, and they said that you could not continue because of the federal fund. I don't know what the true story is, but I would appreciate if you made some effort to improve the situation for the swimming pool.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
My name is Celia Puglisi. I live here since 1991. I cannot be more sad to echo this lady. She's one of those elderlies. There are people, young, old, with disabilities, families with limited incomes, and there are also children that use the pool. They've been close to 1,078 members, the Belt Air Swim and Racquet Club. That was a selling point for ITT when I came here back then, everybody could use the pool. My daughter pay, when she visited, membership or visitors, whatever, to use the pool. They're taking everything away from us. This is, I know is by the school, but you should have been able to work something over just a ledge, $50,000 budget short on a year for these people to lose the use of the memberships of the pool. I mean, everything is bad for Palm Coasters here. Also, the horrible stories we have for over, almost 5,000 complaints to this airport on the adjacent Quell Hollow and Seminole Woods, all those thousands of residents that are continuously bereaged with these flight schools, taking touch-and-gos, learning over us, over even my house at Eight Miles. I walk in 7:00 AM in the morning or earlier, you know, because they're rounds and rounds. It's going to be tragedies here and everybody. The city and the county will be responsible for lives lost, because this is people training, young people training. You need to resolve that issue. One other thing is, please pay attention to us. We don't want a referendum as is written. We wish that if you're going to appoint somebody now to replace Mrs. Hyder, do it until March election of Banel. And if it costs us $100,000, an especial election, okay, then you allow the people to elect somebody, and the person that you appoint now, if it's a good person, will run as well, and will have the chance to be elected by the people. You know, what happened in this election is just the picture of discontent from we, the people, that somebody that is not here said, oh, that's the problem, right? We, the people, are important when we get together. Do something for we, the people. The airport, it's horrible what you hear for these people. Go visit them, see what they are exposed to. And the Belt Air Pool, and just hear us, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Any other speakers, if you want to come out in the aisle?
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. Just wanted to start off by kind of echoing what Andrew said about Kathy Hyder, unfortunate resignation, but you know, thank you for her service to the city council and everything she has done. I'm no longer in the race, so I can talk pretty freely. I'm a little bit concerned, and this came directly from Jason DiLorenzo's mouth, and I think the city needs a little bit of transparency in this. I spoke to him at the Southern Recreation Center at one point, and he said that the intent of the city was to re-center itself up and down along US-1, hence fueling the westward expansion. And I rebutted to him that, in theory, that's a good idea, because if we've lost the plot on Town Center, right? Who cares at this point? Town Center's gone, it's apartments, there's nothing we can build there, we can't get in what we need. So it makes sense in that aspect. However, what doesn't make sense is that all up and along down US-1, and similar to other areas, there's commercial, there's businesses, we've put 7,000 houses. So what is the point of the westward expansion? And if we're going to build out west, I think we should be very transparent in what is being done and what the actual intentions are. Just thoughts.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I don't know if this is the right time. I know there's something with short-term rental, but I don't know any background of that.
That's coming up, if you could hold till we get to that, if you would. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. Mayor, a number of months back, the subject came up about the bonds, okay? And apparently, staff had recommended to you and the council that you needed more room to be able to do bonding in today's world. You needed a little bit more money, okay? Because inflation, we've got inflation going on, so we all recognize that. So what I can't understand and wrap my head around is this convoluted sentence paragraph, as somebody called it here, that you're trying to put up for a referendum. You very simply asked for an increase in the amount, okay? You have a limit now. So the only thing we should really be considering and offering, or being offered for referendum, is a simple increase in the amount of your ability, this city's ability to bond, not yours, excuse me, this city's ability to bond, okay? This has taken a course that is completely convoluted and off course, and it's no wonder there is such a, you know, a uproar in the community. You know, I'm hearing things like Alvin Bonds and all kinds of crazy things going on, okay? And I don't need, you know, it doesn't need to be that way, okay? You simply ask for an increase in your ceiling on how much you can bond. How about just holding to that, rather than getting into this wild goose chase? Now, one thing I would like to bring up and remind everybody, because many of you were not here in 2018. Let me talk about lame duck, okay? We got a lame duck county commission in 2018 when Nate McLaughlin got voted out. On his very last day in office, he stuck us with Bing's Landing for over a million bucks in what's going on right now. It's gone on for years, and I don't believe that it's still settled right now, okay? So we're conscious of that, and we're watching. We're on guard now, okay? We got a part taken from us that we voted in by referendum. We voted to buy it, okay? And then what happened? McLaughlin, Hanson, and Sullivan decided that somebody should be able to put a restaurant on it, okay? And a bad lease was written, a judge made fun of it, and said that you've got to stay the course. So we got stuck with that, and that was all lame ducks. All I'm saying is, please, everybody who, you know, is not continuing on this council, please don't stick us with another- please don't stick us with another Bing's Landing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Please, please, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Angie. I have a concern about Old Belt Air Road. A church was built there, turf was put on Old Belt Air, and that goes off of matance, cuts through, okay? Beautiful sidewalks were put in. We constantly having tractor and trailers pulling up there and using them for their parking spaces all night. They have actually taken the turf, and almost looks like you have two sidewalks now, because all of it's gone. I went, and they're not keeping the grass cut over in that area. I went and spoke to somebody over the other day, and they said, "Well, we have one man who goes one time a week to check these things." Well, that's not acceptable, because these guys are coming home and put, I mean, I've had car haulers parked there. I mean, you need to put new parking signs up there. Now we have a strip torn out, the area needs to be mowed, you know, it's really in bad shape there. So something needs to be done. Now, I talked to bus drivers, the bus drivers are doing the same thing, so they can smoke, they're pulling over there. When you have wet ground, you're tearing the ground up. So I did speak to one of the bus drivers the other day and asked her if she could please, quit having the buses drive up onto this grass and tear this up. She said, "Well, I didn't realize that was a problem." I said, "Well, it's illegal to be up there. It's the grass." So she said, well, she would speak. I haven't seen buses there. But we are having problems with the tractor and trailers, and I understand, you know, maybe they wanna, you know, they wanna stay home a week with their family. That's fine, but find someplace out the park. Quit tearing up our area there, okay? And then I have something to address about a bid, but I need, I guess I have to wait till you do the bid part for client construction. I have a question on that bid, so I have to wait until you do that.
Please.
Okay, I will. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Ed Fuller, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Councilman and Honorable City Councilwoman. I just wanted to acknowledge several employees that I've had dealings with over the past week, and I wanna give them a shout-out. Flagler Tiger Bay had our wine event over here, was well-attended, and I'm sure some of the people in the audience were there. And I wanna thank everyone that was involved with that community center. The place was immaculate. We had catering, the kitchen was clean, the floors were clean, the restrooms were spotless, and the main conference room was unbelievably clean. The PA system was great. When you have an event like this, you only get one time, you get one impression, first impression is the best. So I wanna thank Sandy Grunberg and Aaron Rymstead for their help in making our event a success. So please pass that along for me and our members of Flagler Tiger Bay. Also, I attended the concert in the park. I don't know if I got this band right, but it was Soul Fire. It was unbelievable. They rocked the house. I guess I'm gonna date myself, I actually knew every one of those songs they played. I'm sure everybody in the audience probably did not, maybe, but it was unbelievable and electric. And when you go to an event like that, you figure, boy, there's gonna be all kinds of people there. And there were, maybe 1,500, which was well-attended, which is great. When you attend a event, you wanna make sure, the biggest concern you have, other than the band being good, is that you wanna get into the venue with no problem. And I can tell you this much, when I went there, I went there a little late, and there was traffic bumper to bumper, but I'll tell you what, it moved. There was no congestion whatsoever. And it was an outstanding job of moving people in place so you could get to your proper place and get to that concert immediately. And by the way, those employees that were directing traffic, they were facing the sun. Anybody who's worked out there in the detail in the sun in Florida, it's unbelievable. They did an amazing job. So I wanna get a shout-out to them, please. It was Matthew Johnson, Derek Conklin, Daniel Calkins, Stephen Costello, and Mark Nardone. Please, please give them my shout-out. That was amazing concert. Thank you for putting that on. And one other thing, note, Flagler Tiger Bay is hosting a candidate forum September 25th. Everybody put that down, please. We'll give you some advertising for that, and it'll be at the community center. Thank you very much, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Marilyn Mack, the F section. I've been here 12 and a half years. Place has changed a lot. I just wanted to make some general comments, mainly to my neighbors and some of the other residents here. That's what attorneys do, they do legal jargon. If anybody has any questions, you can feel free to contact me, because I have 26 years of contracting experience. I know what they mean by the words shall, must, and will, very familiar with it. And that's how that whole thing was wrote, was to be confusing for everyone, which I really think that's pretty disgusting, actually. So you don't understand the group of people you have back here, back here, that are protecting each other and working together and trying to make things change, regardless of what you all are trying to do. It's really pretty disgusting. I would like to know how much the cost is for that 25th-year event. Nobody brought that up. I'd like to know how much that is. As far as the bond, what you guys are asking for to change the charter and everything, in my personal opinion, just my personal opinion, I think it's illegal, what you're trying to do. Which I'm not surprised, because you guys don't follow any rules here. The employees don't follow any rules, don't follow any laws, it's just a rogue government. That's what we got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Are there any additional speakers that would like to comment at this time? Hold on. Yes, we still have another speaker.
Gary Kunis, Section C. I'll make this quick. Last mayor authorized a splash pond, which was seven-plus million. We additional three million. We could've built a nice swimming pool for that money. A beautiful pool could've been, a lot of people could've used that. As far as the airport, the city annexed the property around the airport. The people knew they were moving into the airport, and it made noise. That was their option. Article Six, it was deliberately written the way it was to get the votes for it. The two attorneys wrote that, participated in that, should be held accountable for it. I have 2,000 people next door that are gonna vote no, because they don't want it, and you need to remove it from the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional speakers that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. City council members, do you wanna respond briefly to any of the comments?
Pine Lakes Parkway, I got a lot of calls today, a lot of complaints. I think our city manager might have something. I hope you have good news.
Yes, we're actively working with the contractor. Our project manager was on-site today, so we will not have the disruptions tomorrow.
Second, I will make this motion again, one last time, to take these bonds off of the ballot until a new council rewrites the language. Do I have a second? Unfortunately, I need a second up here, folks, but thank you.
First of all, Mr. Vice Mayor, what is your motion?
My motion is to take the bonds off the ballot for November. The language is clearly...
All right, I've recognized you. I've recognized you. I hear the motion.
I've made that motion.
I have a motion. Is there any, is there a second?
I will second for discussion, because I do have something to say about this, and I don't want the discussion to go away.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Okay, on this issue specifically, first, I wanna correct the record, because I heard podcasts out there and incorrect information floating around about how this language came to fruition. The language was edited right here on this dais, because the initial language of the charter amendment was proposed by legal and staff, not me, by legal counsel and by staff. You and I, Vice Mayor Danko, agreed that the language needed to be amended.
Talk to me.
Okay, Mayor. We agreed, myself and Vice Mayor, to amend the language to add more transparency, and then we, as a council, voted jointly. I did not single-handedly write this language. I did not do this by myself. We had consensus from this council, and Vice Mayor and I worked together to edit it to make it more transparent. Anybody can go back and watch that video. My suggestion, because, you know, first of all, this is a referendum. If you all don't want it, then you vote no. And I actually think that that will happen. I do think that it will be, that the vote will be no on this. My suggestion is that we, as council, enter into a refer, because at this point, we could pull it from the ballot, yes, we can't amend the language at this point, right? So what we could do, though, is enter into a resolution, we can, that would be effective January 1st, 2025, if the referendum passes, where it takes a majority or a supermajority vote, so four out of five people, to borrow more than $30 million and enter into any agreement over five years. That would alleviate this, largely alleviate, not completely, but largely alleviate this issue of fear that we will be able to borrow whatever we want, which we can't do, there's all types of lending policies. And we actually, as a city, have a lending policy that wouldn't even allow us to borrow whatever we want. That being said, I recognize the public's apprehension in this regard, and so if we do not get the votes to pull this from the referendum, I suggest that we, as council, enter into this resolution where it requires a supermajority vote to borrow more than $30 million and enter into any contract over five years. I specifically, and this amount needs to be adjusted for inflation. Here's what I will say about the intent behind this charter amendment. I can't speak for anybody else. I don't know what everybody else's intentions with this charter amendment are. My intentions are to fix infrastructure without paying as we go. The pay-as-you-go system is not working. It is not tenable, it is not sustainable. We have to be able to borrow money to fix infrastructure before it breaks. So it is, it is, it is my opinion that when this was entered into for $15 million, what, 25 years ago, it didn't adjust for inflation. That amount of money barely pays for one pipe for our utility system underneath the ground these days. So it does need to be updated, it does need to be changed. Whether or not there were other intentions from other people about building out west and all those things, I can't speak to. I can speak to the challenges that I face every single day up here, trying to figure out how to get money to fix your roads, and how to get money to fix utilities and water and all of those things that we need. And so I understand the apprehension, but I think there are other mechanisms that we can use as council to put on those guardrails and those safeguards that our residents are concerned about.
Hold on one second. Wait, I have Councilman Clufus. Councilman Clufus, any comment at this time?
Not necessarily. I would just say that we do need to find ways to be able to fund our infrastructure projects, but we make it more difficult on ourselves when, you know, we have a rollback of taxes. Last year, we cut $2.5 million out of a budget, and we just have to reemphasize our priorities, because those two are not mutually exclusive, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanna say, when Councilwoman Pontieri and I worked on that language, we were both focused on infrastructure for...
If I may, let me just correct you. It was worked on in the public on the dais. I don't want anyone to think that the two of you colluded somewhere else.
Well, we did, we did both go back and forth on language together, and I believe...
In the public on the dais. I just wanna correct that.
Yes, yes, on the, yes, yes, in public. We did both go back and forth on language, and we did rewrite it, and our, and part of the thing was the emergency thing, which we felt should be pushed further down. And I think both of our focus and tension was for infrastructure for Palm Coast, for the city, Palm Coast 1.0. And I believe we both were in on that same page. I changed my mind after learning other things at a meeting that I expressed last week. I don't know if you were told the same things or not. I assume you weren't, but that is why I changed my mind on this. I like your suggestion, what you just suggested, but I also think we could add something to it, because what we're doing with this is still taking away the right of the public to vote on any bonds. And that's what we presently have right now. The public would have to have a bond. If we came up with a bond for $15 million with a 36-month payback, the public would get to vote on it. So I think any bonding in the future would also include that, I would hope. And I'm curious what you think of that.
So if I, if I may, just for, just for a point of clarification, the term bonding is being used frequently here, council. Can you update us on that?
So when we're using bonds, that's using different things to pay for our projects. So anything from, certainly breaking it down, it is certain types of bonds we have, but I wouldn't, are you asking me to get into specifics of different types of bonds, or what bonds we're gonna be using if we, because there are certain bonds that, as Councilwoman Pontieri pointed out before, we're limited on what we're allowed to use without going through taxes and stuff like that.
Okay, I was really trying to get to the constraints that exist on all bonds from the lender, but we'll get there.
Well, I think the constraints that we presently have are $15 million, 36 months to pay it back, and it has to become part of a referendum that the public would vote on. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so I'm saying we would wanna keep that public right and not take the right away from the public to actually vote. But more importantly, Ms. Pontieri, you also mentioned at the end of our discussion last week that you had some new language that you kind of liked. Was my impression is what you were saying. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, and it's similar to what I'm proposing for the referendum. However, because of the deadline to get language on the ballot, we would have to do two votes on that, and so we don't have that time. So what we'd have to do is pull it from the ballot this time, wait two years. And my concern is, we, we are in a bad way for utilities, I gotta tell you, and you know that, you know, you know that.
Oh, I know utilities, but my concern is the westward expansion.
And the roads.
And a stadium, and 90-something million dollars. That's my concern.
And I'll be, I'll be addressing that when we get to the comp plan.
Also, our council said that we would have to bring this back and forth a couple of times. That's your interpretation of the charter, correct?
I don't understand.
I'm asking our legal counsel.
Yeah, I don't understand the question.
You said, you said, and Ms. Pontieri just referenced it, that if we were to change the language, we would need more time, because we'd have to go back and forth a couple of times. Is that correct?
In a way. So for the statute, requires when you're adopting an ordinance, two reads, and when you, before you adopt it, you have to give a 10-day notice.
So we can't change the language. So all we're left with is removing it from the ballot, which I get the impression the public is going to do anyway, and letting a new council rewrite it with better language. But I'm curious, Councilwoman Pontieri, the language that you like, that you reference, can you read that for us?
My computer is thinking. Give me one moment.
We've all been there.
It's, I will tell you, Vice Mayor, it's similar to what I just proposed as a resolution, because I was going to propose it for the charter amendment, but due to the notice requirements and the read requirements, we just didn't have time at this juncture. And I apologize for the wait. I'm waiting on my computer to get up here.
I hate when that happens, when you're online with somebody, you know, or you're on the telephone, and there's a person on the other end at the bank, and their computer freezes up, and I wish Mr. Clufus was here to tell a few jokes, but feel free, Nick.
Well, fair enough. And you have to have that uncomfortable conversation, trying to stall time, and you don't really know what to do. I'm with it, I feel that.
While we're waiting, if I may, I did have something for the folks that were talking about the airport, that way we're not just wasting time here. First, we did add some language to the comp plan, where it requires us to work with the county on the airport noise. Once my computer pulls up, I'll give you that exact section number that it's been added to the comp plan, and I worked with staff to make sure that language was added, and council agreed. And then also, the county has made it a public knowledge that they are looking to charge a fee per touch and go. So the county is working on that, they do hear you. I've been in touch with the county, and they have told us that that is public knowledge, they are going to try to impose those fees for the touch and go. So on the comp plan policy, for those who want to eventually look it up, it's policy 2.1.8.4, where the city shall coordinate with Flagler County and the Flagler Executive Airport to address noise impacts on residential areas in accordance with federal and state laws, regulations, and guidelines. So we did hear you there, and we are going to address that. Now, regarding the proposed amendment language, I was going to propose prior to learning that we... learning that we just didn't have time to get it on the ballot, because we do have to get the ballot language to the supervisor of elections office, I think by the 5th of this month. Shall Article 6 of the charter be amended by removing provision 3E related to fiscal contracting authority that limit the city's ability, without voter approval, from entering into contracts and incurring debt with repayment terms greater than 36 months and amounts greater than $15 million? The purpose of this amendment is to give city council by a simple majority vote, the authority to assume obligations of any terms and any amount. I felt that was more clear as to what we were doing, and would have proposed that, but obviously, we just don't have that time. So that's why I thought, well, let's come up with something new that we could propose to put on those safeguards, which is that referendum that would require a supermajority vote in order to increase the borrowing that we currently have.
Thank you.
If you would, if you would add, I like the supermajority vote, which I assume means four out of five council people, right? Just out of curiosity, because I don't know, if, say if there were only four council people present, would it then require three out of four, or would you have to have four out of five?
It would have to be unanimous.
So it would have to be four out of five, regardless of how many were present. If you would be willing to add-
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Well, speaking to her. I'm not speaking to you, David. I'm speaking to her.
Mayor, I'm recognizing you, so please.
Yeah, okay, fine. If you would be willing to add to this, it would also have to go on a referendum and let the public decide after we had a supermajority. I would be in favor of it. I think it's a great solution.
Councilwoman Pontieri.
My only, my only issue with that, though, Vice Mayor, is then presumably, it would take years to address infrastructure needs. And I, and I just, I have a concern about that. So it's my opinion that if, and again, I don't think the voting public is going to vote yes on this. I really don't. But if they do, and we then work in this supermajority vote of people that they've elected, to decide that a contract over a certain amount of money is necessary for these infrastructure needs, or quite candidly, a private-public partnership that allows a private company to pay for things rather than the taxpayer, then to me, that is a reasonable safeguard to put in place, but still allows us, in a timely manner, because that's my concern about putting everything on a referendum, still in a timely manner, addressing some of these very expensive infrastructure needs.
So if we put that into place, then what I'm saying, and, and the folks vote down these bonds, or we pull the bonds and put that in place, that would be a good thing too, right? Just to pull the bonds and vote on what you're proposing, which I would be in favor of.
Well, the problem with that is we can't. Because we either have to, we either have to pull this completely from this ballot, and then wait until the next election in two years, or we move forward with this language, and then enter into this, this resolution, which will be effective January 1st of 2025, if the amendment passes. Because we just don't have time to get new language to the SOE.
So we couldn't do this language and pull the bonds, is what you're saying?
No.
You don't have the time. You don't have the time. The calendar doesn't, doesn't allow it.
I wish we could, but we-
I wish we could too, because I like this language.
All right. Councilman Clufus, any comment before I let the public, if you haven't already spoken on the issue? Councilman Clufus, any final comment?
Yeah, no additional comments. I, I think that we're backs are against the wall with the temporal limitations here. But yeah, the new language does make it a little bit more clear on what we're able to do. But unfortunately, it's going to extend our ability to do so, so far out into the future if we don't give it a whirl now. So nope, that's my comment. Thank you.
So with that, I will open up-
One more thing. So what you're saying, I just want to make sure I'm clear, Councilwoman Pontieri, we wouldn't be able, the language you're proposing, the change in language or what you're proposing, we wouldn't be able to do for, or a new council wouldn't be able to do for just two years from now. They could do it.
Sorry, say it again.
On a ballot. It could be put on a ballot in two years. What you're proposing could be put on a ballot in two years from now.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
So we're just talking about waiting two years.
If we wanted to amend, if we, if, whether or not we pull this language from the ballot now, and wait on the new council to propose it for next year, or whether we move forward with this vote now, and then have the new council say, we want to amend again, we can do that too.
Right. So we're just talking two years waiting.
No, no, no. Listen to what you just said. The new, hold on. Let's listen for a minute. The new council can come in and amend. The new council can come in and amend in advance of the two years. Is that correct?
Can you please clarify which language you're talking about?
If, okay. The language that would be, if the language that is currently headed for the ballot was voted favorably, can any adjustment to that language be made before the next election?
You would be making another amendment.
Yeah, we'd have to do another charter amendment.
Yeah, you'd be making another amendment to the charter. So that would have to go to the-
It would have to wait for two years. Okay.
So my question is, what you were proposing, all right, say we just yanked this off the ballot, but then you propose your language here, and we vote on this tonight, or a week from now, whenever.
No, no, we, no, wait. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. We're going to vote in just a minute.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about something different for conversation here.
Well, let's stick with the motion.
Yeah, I know what the motion is, but what I'm trying to under-
Vice Mayor, there's a procedure that we have to follow.
I understand the procedure.
I have to have public, no, you don't, because I have to have public comment regarding this motion.
I'm asking her, she had brought up something else that she wanted to tack on in case this passed. And I'm saying is, if we voted on what you brought up, all right, that could go on as a referendum in just two short years.
It, yes. So it can hold as a resolution in the meantime. And then, yes, the new council can say, hey, we want to further amend the charter again, and we do the same process that we did with this council.
Right. So I really think then, considering that, and I love your language here, I really do. I appreciate it so much. I think yanking this from the ballot and proceeding down the path you just laid out, only puts us two years away from getting the ability to actually do bonds in a way that the public understands why we're doing it. I actually think this makes a lot of sense.
Good. Okay. Now I will open up public comment. Does anyone want to, want to comment? If you haven't already spoken on this issue, on the conversation that we just had, on the motion on the floor.
Okay. Just, can I speak? Did she mention the airport?
I can't hear you. Well, talk into the microphone, not to me. Through, through me through there. Pull it down. There you go.
Before you put me on the timer.
And introduce yourself first.
I just want to know, honey, Gina Wise Quail Hollow.
Introduce yourself.
Can I speak on the airport plan that she mentioned?
No, no, no. And I'm only, I'm, I'm, I'm only doing public comment. We have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. So right now, public comment on the motion that is in play.
Okay.
You, I'll find, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Later, later in the agenda, there's an appropriate spot for that.
Yes, there is.
Please. Introduce yourself.
Jeannie Duarte, Mr. Danko, what are you doing?
Please address your comments to me. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Mayor Alvin, what is Mr. Danko doing? This language is still very, just, very confusing. I say we drop it, and not throw in anything that's going to further confuse, that's more toward what you're trying to accomplish. You're still trying to song and dance and dance around the same stuff. Your proposed language that you just said is almost identical to what we already said we don't approve of. And now you want to song and dance, and make it even more confusing about something else that you want to add to it, change it, and think you're going to throw it in there and maybe, you know, temporarily do for the next two years. I don't know what you're trying to pull here, but absolutely not.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Donna Kaler, E-section. First, I have a question, and this is, I think it's a legitimate question. The city or the council already has the ability and the authority to, to do the bond thing up to 15 million, yes? Am I right there?
Well, this is public comment, so I'll have somebody, okay.
Thank you, Ted.
That's, okay.
Because your answer kind of feeds my next question, or my next comment. If you already have the ability, why do you need more? It, it just seems like every time this council needs money for something, you're coming to us, coming to us. The well is dry. I know we're behind the eight ball on a lot of utility and infrastructure issues, and that's where our heart is here. That's where we want the money to go. But somewhere in the, in the matrix, this story about this sports complex got started, and we're saying absolutely not. We do not need a sports complex. We need better roads. We need wastewater treatment, capacity increases, and until we can take care of those, no. But you already have the ability to issue bonds for infrastructure, I guess, don't you?
Public comment, okay. Next speaker, please.
Chantal Prelinger. Yes, that was very confusing. What I understand from that is you're trying to get more money. You need more money, right?
This is your turn for public comment, so your questions will go onto the record.
So, my question. But I remember when you tried to pass that increase of salary for you all, some of you were not in that council. You said that the finances were very heavy. What happened in between? Did you lie to us? Was it heavy? Was it not? Why do we need to borrow so much money?
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Give him a minute. Okay, go ahead.
Mark Stansfield, Seminole Woods. Problem with, you know, this bond thing is, you know, we need to let the new council take care of this. Pass it on to the new council. Let them take care of the rewording it. And, because people, people here are scared. They hear rumors about stadiums, and out nowhere, and slums, and, and, you know, it scares people. People don't need to be scared. People, Palm Coast, need to be secure. You know, we do need the infrastructure help, you know. Water, water waste plant number one is overburdened, and needs to be totally rehauled. Okay? That, that's a lot of money. You know, right now, we need another membrane out, out of water treatment plant number three, you know? And that's going to take two, two years to install, but we need it now. Okay? But we're going to be behind the eight ball if we don't take care of the damn infrastructure, you know? So we don't need to, to burden the people with something that they, they're scared of. You know, we need to take care of it. Pass it on to the new city council, let them reword it, and take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Bob, are you next, I think? Either one. Either one. Go ahead.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. My daughter has a famous line that when something happens, she said, well, we didn't just wake up this morning and this happened. Well, no words were ever true. The council just didn't wake up this morning and say, you know what? Tonight at the meeting, we're going to bring up about bond issues. This has been brewing for months, if not years. So considering the fact that four of the five people who sit up here, who determine how much we have to spend in taxes, are going to be gone in another couple of weeks, why don't we, since we didn't just wake up this morning and say, we need bond money, why don't we wait until the new council and the whole regime up there is sitting in place, and let them make the decision? I have the utmost respect for Councilwoman Pontieri, but I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we're going to go broke between now and the time that the new council sits. Now, you're probably one of the smartest people sitting up there, because you're explaining it to us so we can understand this. But like I said, you folks didn't just wake up this morning and say, I think we should bring this up tonight at the meeting. This had, had to have been brewing for a while. So why don't we let it brew a little bit longer, and wait until the new council comes in? Because if you were sitting here as a new council person, and you walked in and got slapped in the face with this, and you had X amount of people pissed off at you before you even get sworn in, so why don't we just hold off? Nobody's going to, we're not going to go broke. We'll just continue to pay the bills, and just let Welling up alone. Because there's an old Irishman who once said, if it ain't broken, don't fix it. Well, we've had more important things that are broke that we're not fixing. Just travel up and down some of our roads.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Please.
Marilyn Mack, the F-section. I've been here for 12 and a half years. This is really appalling to you all, because it's very obvious that that was worded to confuse people. So it's misleading. That really infuriates me. Shouldn't try to do that to people. And you want it to pass because that's your answer to do the infrastructure. You know, we could have had money for the infrastructure if you would ask for it priority-wise on the money that you asked from the state this year, instead of it going to the West End. I guess you think we forget everything. We don't. Do you all understand what the definition is of fiscal malfeasance? Our tax dollars pay for everything here. They pay your salaries. You're supposed to be working for us. We can, we cannot eat tennis balls. We can't drink tennis balls. We need water. Even if you did the water treatment plant right now, which we don't have the money for it, that you say we don't have the money for it, which I kind of really question that, it wouldn't even be in place in time to save us from spitting out of water. Do y'all know that? With the amount of houses that are right now on the books to be built, by the, this time next year, we're going to be in serious trouble. So y'all need to find out a different way. And no, this council should never get to vote whether or not there's going to be bonds allowed. That should come from the residents and the neighbors, because that's who's going to pay for it. You can't keep operating this municipality government in this manner. Again, it's tax dollars. I don't care if it's grant money. I don't care if it's federal money, state, local, whatever. Came from a taxpayer. You guys can't think of ways to save money? Cut some of this staff. Why do we have all these million people running around doing news broadcasts? I've never seen that in my life. And I worked for the government for 26 years. Why do we have those people? I don't understand it. Cut some of these salaries. There's so many people here that are overpaid, and underqualified, by the way. It's ridiculous. And thirdly, lastly, or whatever, this procurement office in 12 and a half years has never saved one copper penny for tax dollars here, and that's what they're required to do. But yet, you're fully staffed. There's so many answers that are not being done here. It's ridiculous.
Next. Hey, please. Let's give each speaker his time, please.
Mayor Dennis McDonald. In the back room, I stand in there, and I'm listening to all this. I, one question just comes to my mind, is, is that what part of being voted out of office by the public don't you guys understand? I don't get it. Mayor, honestly, I don't, I honestly, I don't get it.
Mrs. McDonald, I don't want to adjourn the meeting until we have decorum, so please. Continue.
Everybody is upset here. They don't want decisions made by the remainder of this lame duck council, okay? We've had Kathy Heider resign, and I think Kathy Heider really saved herself. This is painful, what's going on. Okay? Maybe that's the reason why she resigned. You know, I, I hear people say that you need more money. Okay? As you know, I've been around in Palm Coast for a good number of years, okay? 20. So what I'd like to let you know is, is that we're talking about, well, we need money for infrastructure. We need money for infrastructure and water and sewer, okay? You had an enterprise fund at one time that was a cash cow. This former staff, not, not the present staff, but the former staff and the former council used that, okay, as a piggy bank, okay, for millions of dollars. We tracked it. We sat with Chris, the, the guy who was your, you know, financial guy here, who ran the, the dollars for the city. We found it all. There were millions of dollars that got moved out, okay? There were loans that were made to the city and never repaid. So, and I'm not trying to put that on, on your backs. It's not. But the city made some really bad moves before, and now it, the chickens are coming home to roost. And so all I'm saying here is, you're in a very bad situation. You cannot make this thing better, okay? Take it off the table, and move on, and be gone in the end of November. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers? Please, 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 please. Let, let the speakers come forward.
Ms. Michael of the W-section. I just have a question. I don't know how long your pensions are for after you leave the council, or when you quit working for the city of Palm Coast. But I had to work over 20 years to get my pension. I think we can save money- I think we can save money by only giving you a pension for the amount of years that you worked, instead of giving you a lifelong pension. We'd be saving a lot of money if all the employees have a lifelong pension and you only work a couple of years or four years and not even full-time. I had to work full-time over 20 years to get mine. So, we can save money by putting that pension back into the city.
Next speaker, please.
Let me just clarify. We don't get a pension up here. There's no pension for us, just so you know.
Let the speaker, please. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Leslie Johnson, and I'm from the P section. I just, I'm not going to add anything to what others have said. I think you've heard it. But I do have a question, and I've heard it come from Ms. Pontieri twice tonight. What does it take to make this type of referendum pass? Ms. Pontieri mentioned earlier a supermajority. Can you please clarify what this supermajority is in terms of how many votes or percentage? You say four? Four votes? That's a supermajority?
I think you're convoluting the two things.
I'm sorry. There's an alarm that keeps going on, and it's just, it's very distracting.
If you couldn't hear it in back, so, ask your question again.
What makes a supermajority? Four votes?
Yeah, I, Ms. Pontieri is correct, but when we get to final discussion, maybe Ms. Pontieri, you can address that, okay? Go ahead.
Okay, so that's really the only question that I had. So, if this thing passes by four votes, or...
We'll address it after the public comment.
Thank you.
James D., real quick. I think the language you modified is very good. It could be still confusing to some people. However, I think if you're going to knock this off the ballot, maybe keep that language in place so that if they go to the next council, they don't have to go back to the original and start all over. They could build on what you've already proposed. And yeah, we do need money for infrastructure, so here it's about, I don't know what to do, what to balance here, but we don't need a sports data. We need infrastructure and keep that language so the next council could build on that where they have to modify.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I do have a question here. I believe that our utility is an enterprise, and the utility has been getting bonds, I'm correct, without the referendum of the people. The utility got millions in bonds since we incorporated it. Of course, it was used as a cash cow. I've been here all these years, and I should know about that, that we are paying the price because the reserves were not properly used for what they were intended, and now we need reserves and we don't have them. But I believe that the utility enterprise, because Councilman Pontieri is concerned about that type of utility, which I am concerned as well, because here was Mr. Flanagan telling us, warning us, what was coming to us and what could have a big breakup, and we don't have the funds a few months ago, and I think I don't see him anymore, unfortunately, and he had the experience, and I don't know why, he's not with us anymore, just because he was saying, maybe warning us, that we can have a major situation if we don't have the funds. And I do agree with Ms. Pontieri that we need those funds, but do I believe that the utility, unless the utility is bonded out, the utility can get its own bonds because it's an enterprise, an individual enterprise? And if that's the case, then the only money we might need are for roads that Councilman Pontieri says, because unless the utility is totally bonded out, I don't know.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments at this time? All right. No. One time, three minutes. Are there any other speakers? All right, with that, I'll come back to the dais. If I could, could you just clarify, because there was trouble hearing in the back about the process of a referendum vote versus a supermajority, so there's clarification.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, the supermajority vote was for the resolution that I proposed, that if the charter amendment does pass, we as council entered into a resolution where we need a supermajority vote to go over a certain dollar amount. So, it would take four out of five of us to, that just puts safeguards on the amount that we can borrow for in the length of time. So, that was if the charter amendment passes via the election, which is, has nothing to do with the supermajority, then we as council would have a safeguard for you all and would require four out of five votes in order to borrow over a certain amount of money. That's what that was.
Any final comments before I call the vote?
Again, the motion, though, we're not at the point where, what you're suggesting, we're not anywhere near there. The motion here is still to remove this...
The motion's been made, and seconded.
Right.
Okay. So, if there's any final discussion?
I'm trying to have that discussion. You keep interrupting me.
Well, you're repeating what we've already done, sir.
Well, that's too bad. You'll have to listen. Jeez. Look, the motion here is to remove this from the ballot...
Yeah, we understand that.
Because the language is confusing, it's dishonest, and it's deceitful, and I want to be very clear on that. Ms. Pontieri, you don't like the language either, and you even have said that if we could rewrite this language to put it on the ballot, you would love to do that, but we don't have time according to our attorney. So, I believe the responsible thing to do is pull this off the ballot now, let the next council deal with it, and we only have to wait two short years to put it on a ballot the next election, and if it's explained properly to folks and what it's for, and if it's honestly explained, there's a chance you could vote on it if you think it would help with our infrastructure.
Thank you.
So, that is why I am saying we need to pull this off the ballot.
Okay, you've made the motion. Councilwoman Pontieri, any final discussion?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Clufus, any final discussion?
My only comment is, if this failed on the November ballot, that doesn't preempt the future councils for putting on a ballot as well, right?
No.
Councilwoman Clufus, I'm going to defer to council. I believe it's, that's, you're correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, understood. That was my only comment. And also, I'm term limited. There was a lot of talk out there about getting voted out, but four years ago, when I got elected, we knew this was my last hurrah, so thank you very much.
Very good. All right, with that, I'll have the clerk roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
No.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
No.
The motion does not have a majority.
All right, we now move to...
Do you have one more comment on public comment?
Go ahead, you can.
Okay, so I do want to address the appointment of Ms. Hider's seat. You all saw an example of why we need that seat just now.
I'm sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt. I don't think the audience understands. So, in a tie vote, the motion...
In a tie vote, it does not pass.
Correct. Okay, now, please continue. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, so, so, Mr., so...
Counsel?
In a tie vote, the motion does not pass.
Okay, Mr. Webb, I believe you asked if we could wait for the new council to be seated in order to appoint somebody. You all literally just saw an example of why we need somebody in that seat tomorrow. We need somebody in that seat immediately, because when you have a two-two vote like this, motions don't pass, they fail. So, I understand the concern about wanting to get somebody in here that is chosen by the new council, but I have two really big concerns with that. One, in order for the new council to seat that person, they would have to do it pretty immediately, and it really doesn't give them a lot of time to vet the applicants, whereas our schedule that we've agreed upon up here not only gives us time to vet the applicants, but it also gives the public, I think, three public hearings, two night public hearings to make comment and to give us feedback, their thoughts, et cetera. So, we're trying to make that as much as I've said a democratic process is possible. But more importantly than that, this will allow us to get somebody in that seat, I think, six to eight weeks sooner, and we need somebody in that seat as soon as possible.
Thank you for your comments. We now move to letter F on the agenda, which are minutes. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the city council business meeting held on August the 27th, 2024. Vice Mayor's made the motion to approve. Councilwoman Pontieri has seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes to you, Ms. Lee.
Clerk, have the call. Thank you. We now move to letter G on your agenda, which would be ordinances of the first read. So, counsel, if you would read the G5 into the record for me, please.
Ordinance 2024-XX, amending City of Palm Coast ordinances, Chapter 17, Community Development, as amended to add Article 5, Short-Term Vacation Rentals.
Who's going to lead the read?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff, and Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager. And as you've requested, we have, with council, worked on a short-term rental ordinance. This is, was originally scheduled to go next week at a workshop, and you accelerated the process based on some comments from the residents. But with that, I ask that you please think about policy here. We definitely need some policy direction. There's going to be some questions. I have some slides towards the end we're going to need some help with. Usually, we'd work through this at a workshop, but this is first reading, and we can make those adjustments before it comes back to you for a second read, okay? So, this is the intent of the ordinance. It's to create a short-term vacation rental license that includes safety and operational requirements, standards for parking and solid waste, licensure requirements, and posting at the home itself, and administration penalties, enforcement, and an effective date. Starting with the requirements for certification, you, the operator will require to submit a sample lease that includes the names and ages of the occupants, the tag numbers for all vehicles, the maximum occupancy determination, that is something we will review for, the maximum number of parking spaces, the 24-hour contact by the owner, property manager, or secondary contact, and acknowledgement by affidavit that we will have the ability to inspect the home, and also an acknowledgement of the code of ordinances and the maximum sound levels allowed in the ordinance. Continuing, there has to be a designation of duties of a responsible party, and that person has to be able to respond to routine inspections, non-routine inspections and complaints and immediate problems. They have to be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, respond in less than two hours, and be available for weekly compliance monitoring, should it be necessary for the city. There's also licensing and fee requirements related to DBPR and the Department of Revenue, sexual offender and predator compliance for background checks, and advertising requirements as well. The ordinance proposes that a registration will be valid for 12 months, and if there's any change to the occupancy, or if it's found that there has been a change to the occupancy, a new application will have to be completed, and when it comes to renewal after those 12 months, the city shall consider the violation history and shall not review if there's outstanding violations, fines, or liens. As I mentioned earlier, we've also included use in occupancy standards, some life safety requirements like swimming pool, spa, and hot tub safety to meet the Florida Building Code, smoke and carbon monoxide detection requirements in the Florida Building Code, fire extinguisher and emergency lighting requirements as well to make sure that the operations are safe. We have proposed a maximum occupancy, and this is where we need some policy help, of two per habitable space with a maximum of 12. I'll describe that for you. If you have a three-bedroom home, that would be two per habitable space, so two per sleeping room, so that'd be six. And then, the definition of habitable space includes the ability to exit directly out of the building without passing through another room. So, if they, obviously, a living room could count as two more persons as well. If the house had a family room with direct access egress to the outside, that could be considered as two as well. So, I'll repeat. Let's say if you had a three-bedroom home with a family room that exited directly outside and a great room or a living room that exited directly outside, you could have two for six for the sleeping rooms, two for the family room, and two for the great room, for a total of 10. If it was a four-bedroom, you could get to 12. We're proposing a max of 12. If it's a two-bedroom, then you're looking at four, plus it's likely not going to have a family room in a smaller unit like that, so you would have two for each bedroom and then two more for the living room, as long as it exited directly outside. We have limited the parking requirements to only in the driveway. We've excluded the garage since in Florida, we don't have attics. People generally store stuff in their garage, and so, not all operators may have it the same, but if you've ever rented a short-term rental on your own, they often have the owners' items are locked up in the garage, or there's items to use, bicycles, or other recreational equipment is in the garage. So, we decided that we would just not count the garage for parking at all, and limit it directly to parking in the driveway. And you will remember that we don't allow on-street parking, so the parking limit would be limited to the size of the driveway. We also have some requirements for solid waste, including the number of containers required based on occupancy, that they have covers, and that the pickup schedule is posted. In the unit itself, there is a set of postings that'll be required to either be on the door or on the refrigerator, which includes the name, address, and phone number of the owner or property manager, the maximum occupancy of the unit, the maximum number of vehicles that can be parked, an evacuation map, the location of the nearest hospital, a reference to our quiet hours or sound level limits, as they're called in the code, and the days for trash pickup and recycling, and also some canal boating regulations related to the age requirements for boating and the no-wake in our canals. For remedies and enforcement, it's our goal to have the properties remain in compliance. The first-time issue will have a warning. Beyond that, the Code Enforcement Board in Chapter 162 will be used to prosecute issues and have violations, hold hearings, and assess fines related to the code. And of course, we will use all other remedies as needed if we have additional issues. We did meet with some resident stakeholders two times during this process, and there were a couple items that we were not able to include at this time, but a couple of them are policy action items and a couple of them are state law. So, they asked us to exclude recreational trailers from the driveways and to add additional lighting regulations. Trailers and lights are already in requirements, are already in our code. We didn't find it necessary to add another set of regulations when we already have them in place. Having a cap on the number of rentals under a single ownership, in other words, one owner that owns many of them, and also a limit based on location and proximity to each... that owns many of them, and also a limit based on location and proximity to each other. We worked with legal counsel, and they were determined to not be consistent with state law, those two requests. We also, not at our own request, but we were requested to have a meeting with some stakeholders of operators, and they provided a list that we worked through, but these were the ones that we weren't able to accommodate at this time, but we need policy help with. And these are for reference right in the section number in the ordinance for you. So they've asked to allow operators that use certain platforms to provide a terms of service instead of a sample lease. So I'm not very familiar with this, but apparently, the terms of service covers a lot of the items. If, let me back up. If an operator uses one of the common platforms, they have to agree to a terms of service. The terms of service covers a lot of the issues that we are requesting in the certification related to the sample lease, but not all of them. They asked that we would accept, if the operator was using that platform, one of those platforms, that we would accept the terms of service. We requested a set of those terms of services to review. I'm not sure, Mr. Duffy, if you received it today or not. Okay. So we haven't had an opportunity to review and compare what a terms of service looks like compared to a sample lease. They also asked that we expand the designation of the responsible party when it comes to satisfying the weekly monitoring requirement. How it was described to us is that cleaning personnel are onsite, immediately following. A rental, it's required by the platform that cleaning occur, and as part of the monitoring, could the responsible party be expanded beyond one and include other folks that would be identified that we could make contact with in case we needed to meet with them for a monitoring concern. In 1768A, 5 and 6, which is related to licensing under DBPR and the Department of Revenue, they would like to add, if applicable, to the licensing requirements. They explained to us that the platform doesn't allow operators that rent out a single room to use the platform, and that also, DBPR, they claim, we're asking for proof, will not issue a license to an individual that just wishes to rent out a room. So we have a little bit of a divergence here between a rental of an entire unit compared to a room. They suggested that if we added "if applicable" to those two sections, that depending on what they fell under, it would be covered. So if they were just renting a room and DBPR could not provide a license for that, then the "if applicable" would cover that because they would not be able to turn that into us. Moving on, they asked if we could provide a clear explanation of advertising requirements. We asked for some sample language from other ordinances. Apparently, Indian Rocks Beach in their ordinance, as we've proposed it, it says, you know, you have to, your advertising has to be consistent with what you have on your certification, on your, you know, on what's approved by the city. They make it, the Indian Rocks Beach ordinance makes it a little bit clearer, but we haven't seen that language yet to compare to ours. They also requested that we delete the requirements for battery-powered emergency lighting because they said it would be too onerous because they would have to hire an electrical contractor to install that. Staff does not agree that that's a good idea. We prefer to keep that safety feature in place. And allow and opt-out for certain platforms that perform background checks as part of the platform application process. This relates to the sexual predator section of the ordinance. It was described to us that users of the, every user of the platform has, they conduct a background check, either if you're on the operator's side or the renter's side. And so if you could opt-out of having to provide the sexual predator background check if you were using this platform because it would already be covered. They also mentioned another item, which I certainly didn't contemplate, is that international renters, we would not be able to get a background check done on an international renter because that goes through Interpol and not the FBI, I believe, or whatever database the sheriff's office uses. So those were the items that were brought to our attention via the operators through one of the platform providers. So, City Council, I'm just going to move to the next slide, which has a couple action items, but I encourage you that we can move back to the other two kind of unresolved slides as well if it's easier for you. But we want to confirm with City Council the maximum occupancy. If you agree that two per sleeping and habitable space with maximum of 12 is what you desire. We will have to bring a fee resolution back with the second reading. The fees we are proposing are consistent with Flagler County, $400 for the initial registration, and $200 from renewal. There's some also, there are also some lower fees for if there's a change, or if you have to make any changes, I believe they're $50, but we'll bring a fee resolution back to you once you provide us a little bit more guidance on what your expectations are for fees. And then I just left it at other concerns here, and we can move between those slides. And that is the presentation.
So just quickly, did you reference the impact on your code staff? If, first of all, let me say this. I think City Council has indicated, because that's a compilation of all of the items that City Council had brought forward to you, each of us with different parts of them. So is there any reference to what this would do or cost in terms of code enforcement? Because there, I mean, there are more than dozens of things to watch over times hundreds of units, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. Starting with the start date of February, we need, we'll need time to build a process. We'll need time to build the applications, and we'll need time for our existing short-term rental operators to come into compliance.
Is it considered in the current budget?
Yes, and that was step two, I was going to say, is that you have contemplated adding another code officer that would help us manage the additional workload.
And I do have just one more question. Can this, if City Council is in favor of all of these options, providing you with the policy decisions that you need, does the state have the ability to usurp or turn this backwards at its choosing in the next legislative session?
The, we worked directly with council to make sure that we have a legally defensible ordinance. So as far as I know, it's consistent with state law. I don't know if Marcus wants to add anything.
So yeah, is it legal as written, as drafted, as instructed by this?
It's legal today. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking about in the next or a future session.
If a future session comes in and a, just like it was previously, and decides like, hey, we're going to annex all things, this is how it's going to be, yes, there's a possibility in that scenario that our law could go away.
So, and here's what I'm getting to. In advance of building up your staff, is there a likelihood, will our moving forward with this help us fight the state's usurpation of all of these, we'll call them hurdles?
Mayor, that's a good question. As you know, previous state legislation used a 2011 date previously. If you, they grandfathered ordinances that were approved previous to 2011. I think it would really depend on what the state did moving forward.
So the sooner we put it into play, based on history, the better chance we have of being grandfathered in with this.
Yes, sir.
And if I could just ask one other question. Can you give me a count on how many local Palm Coast residents or would be impacted by this that own properties that they, do we have any feel for that?
We believe, through working with Flagler County, who manages the registry, that there are approximately 275. They fluctuate by about 10 to 20 monthly, either dropping off or coming on, but it's somewhere around.
Just a point of reference.
But your question was Flagler County residents, and I don't know how many are owned locally or not.
Okay, fair enough. And then, just because of the amount of detail, and I'm going to ask City Council this, would you consider each City Council person doing an interview with staff to give them the policy? In other words, to debate all of this policy is complicated. Would you consider that? Make your comments, of course, but being interviewed by the team, what your preference would be on each line item that he just went through?
Of course, always.
Yeah. Because I mean, for us to decide how many people per room without sitting down and having a legitimate discussion is sort of, you know, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand the request. So are you suggesting we give our thoughts tonight from the dais, but then actually meet with staff to go through it more specifically, and then they come back and bring to us what the perceived consensus is?
Correct. In other words, so staff is asking for some specifically, specific policy direction. What I'm asking is, is each of us were to meet with staff, to offer them that specific policy direction, they consolidate it, bring it back to us.
Or can we do it at a workshop?
Or that, if you want to add another one.
I'm just throwing that, I'm not.
We want to do it sooner than later. Either way, it's fine.
Yeah, I think the, I think the goal, and I, correct me, Mayor, if I'm misspeaking, but I think the goal was to get this done quickly, and adding that workshop in would slow it down.
Yeah.
So I mean, I'm happy to meet with staff.
Yeah.
And before it comes up for a second read.
But then if we meant separately, we're all putting our two cents in separately, and they come back and say, well, you want this, and you want that, and he wants this.
Well, but consolidate, and remember, I think, and the theme, the overriding theme here, you want to get it done before the end of this year, because if there's a grandfathering year, you do not want it to go into the next legislative session.
And we get it done at our next workshop, is what I'm asking.
Unlikely. I think it really needs to be done on a, I mean, it's, well, my opinion is, there's a lot of conversation here. I don't know how you all feel. City Manager.
I mean, just to, you know, give transparency to the public, it is beneficial for you guys to work through these policy decisions from the dais instead of us going one-on-one. To Vice Mayor's point, you know, building that consensus, you know, we need to hear it from you collectively from the dais.
I don't think it would take us that long, honestly, to go through this and bang, bang, bang it out.
So we have, we have a workshop on the 10th, so it would be workshop then, presumably?
Okay.
I think we could do it rather quickly that way.
So just trying to satisfy the public's request and the action that you gave staff. You wanted us to prepare it for tonight as an ordinance first reading. I mean, we're prepared to seek your direction now so that it can make it into the ordinance second read on September 17th, and then it'll give staff enough time to build the process involved.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are you prepared to make a decision on the limited number of policy items that staff has requested?
I am.
I am, too, yeah.
Mr. Clufus?
Councilman Clufus, are you good to go with the limited number of policy?
Absolutely.
Okay. So why don't you lead us? Mr. DiLorenzo.
Okay. Would you like me to start here? Let's start here, and then we'll work backwards from there, okay? So the, are you comfortable with the maximum occupancy?
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine.
Okay, I'm not.
So I'm not going to ask you what you're going to base it on, but, okay, go ahead. That's what I was trying to avoid, just picking a number out of the air.
Yeah, so I, well, I'm not just picking a number out of the, out of the air. I would suggest we do two people per sleeping space for a maximum of 10, because habitable space that has an exterior door could be a kitchen, it could be a living room, so it really could add up here. So my suggestion would be two per sleeping space, take out the habitable space with a maximum of 10. That's just my suggestion.
And just my question, okay, please, come on, let us get through this. My question is, do you have to have a, like a bathroom facility in proximity, or just sleeping space can be wherever it is?
Well, they define sleeping space as basically a bedroom. I mean, it's a bedroom.
Well, wait, that's not the way I understood it. Did you not include a living room?
Yeah, for habitable, for habitable, but also, we also put limitations on it, and I'll read it for you.
Okay.
Habitable space means a space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking, bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, screens, screen enclosures, sunrooms. Sunroom categories are defined in the Florida Building Code. Storage, utility spaces, garages, and similar areas are not considered habitable spaces.
Counsel, is that easily challenged by property owners, those definitions, or are they clear enough?
So.
What I don't want to do is, I don't want to end up with a million challenges to these definitions.
Mayor, so when, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, when working with staff, we looked at other ordinances, we always look, and we also looked at the Florida Building Code. So that's what this is drafted off of.
So you feel comfortable they could be defended? Okay.
Yes, Mayor, this habitable space definition is from the Florida Building Code.
Okay. Councilman Clufus, comment?
Yeah, so right now, in the proposal, the maximum amount of occupants is 12, is that correct? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so it's 12. The only, I understand where Councilman Panter is coming from. My only rebuke would be, you know, a living area that has a pullout couch or things like that, but I think the expanded definition of habitable space, not including all those things, kind of wholly defines it. But I think the bigger question here is, do we want to set the maximum occupancy to 12 versus 10?
I'm sorry, I heard you broke up at the end. To what?
I think the real question here is whether we set the maximum occupancy to 12 or 10, I think.
Council members? All right. Council members.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were waiting on me.
No.
I mean, if we want to keep habitable space, okay, I just think the maximum should be 10. 10 is a lot of people to put in one of our residential units here in Palm Coast, so I would say 10 should be. Now, what I'm curious about is, is this defensible with the Burt-Harris Act? Because the language that I've seen in order to defend that is two per sleeping room plus two for a maximum of 10. Now, if the language you think is defensible as is, great, but I do know that that specific language has been challenged, and the cities have prevailed.
And for the record, I'm okay with going to a maximum occupants of 10, and I think the other issues that we're talking about right now with the Burt-Harris Act and all these things relying on death interference of these spaces, I think the bigger question is just 12 versus 10, right? And I'm okay with 10.
Can you be more specific? Are you talking about habitable or sleeping?
Me, habitable, because I think, yep, absolutely.
Does that include children? I mean, like, like a newborn baby or something, you know? I'm just asking.
Two parents and a child, and their mattress for the children.
Okay.
Hold on. Staff, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, as written, Mayor, it doesn't, it's regardless of age. However, that did come up in our conversation with one of the platform operators, that some communities set an age limit where they don't count those children.
Discussion?
Two parents and a baby.
Hey, excuse me, sir, sir, please. All right, I'll, we'll get to public comment, okay? We'll get to public comment.
Jason, what was the age that the platform vendors recommended as far as like, you know, definition of a person versus not? Was it super low? I'm just curious. I don't really support. support allowing anyone under the, under any age to not be included into this amount, but I'm just curious what that age was.
Councilmember Clufus, I think, I don't think it's consistent from ordinance to ordinance.
Yeah, so I, I can add a little bit on that, Mayor, if that's okay. There's like, there are ordinances out there that they do sometime. It's three and below, or five below, but it is, there's no consensus on that. It depends on the ordinance.
All right, so we need to move forward consensus. Councilman Panteri, any, where are you at?
I mean, I, I think we make it very simple. Two per sleeping and habitable space with a maximum of 10.
Council, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good with that, as long as, and I don't know the answer to this, do we have any larger homes that are involved that, that can hold, you know, that have six bedrooms, or eight bedrooms, or, you know, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, but that's, that's part of the formula, right?
Part of the formula.
Well, but you still have the maximum.
Oh, yeah, the max.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Our residents, these are residential homes, these are residential homes within neighborhoods. I understand that there might be some larger homes, but I'm sticking firm on this. We have to be mindful of the property owner's rights across the board, and there are, there are some policies in here that I am going to be in favor of that the rest of, the rest of our residents are probably not going to be in favor of, but this one I think we need to hold firm, because I think, I think the maximum of 10 is going to eliminate a lot of other issues we're seeing, including the exuberant amount of trash that these, that these STRs create, and the parking issues that they create. So I think that limiting it to 10 will take care of a lot of the other issues we're seeing.
Well, the parking issues are certainly a good point, and the trash is too. So I'm good with it.
Councilman Clufus, 12 or 10?
I'm okay with 10. I think that's completely fine. As far as the parking, that's my only other concern. When I went over our packet, essentially, I was curious whether a recreational trailer includes a boat trailer or a jet ski trailer, but I think that's an outcome in mind.
You have consensus on 10?
Yes, sir, thank you. Moving on, the proposed registration fees, like I mentioned, they're consistent with Flagler County, but you could set that fee where you like.
Comments?
Can we adjust it for inflation?
Have it adjust automatically?
Correct.
Without bringing back the fee resolution?
Correct. I think it should. I mean, if you think about a normal lease, usually they have a 10% worked-in increase year after year. So rather than have, I mean, we, we don't want to be in a situation where five, 10 years from now, we're opening this back up just because the fees are outdated. So I would say we do rush, an adjusted CPI year after year.
Makes sense.
Because our, our expenses are going to increase.
Well, and you know the lease is going to go up too, so that's, makes sense. Vice Mayor, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, Councilman Clufus, adjusted for, for inflation? Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, I'm sorry. I had a, I would say I have no problem with adjusting for inflation, but are there other examples where, so 400 and 200 is great, but I don't think that's going to get us anywhere near being able to fund an additional office there for our code enforcement, but do you have any other examples of different fee structures outside of Flagler County?
I mean, you could re, Councilman Clufus, you, you know, this can be revisited, the fee structure, how often? Every year, right?
Yes, it could be, it's just going to be a resolution, so yes, it could be adjusted.
It could be adjusted. I mean, I think you're putting index in, makes sense.
Well, I'm just curious, currently, are there other, are there other cities and counties that are charging a $1,000 registration fee? That's, that's really my question. Is this predicted to be, you know, the norm? Because for 400 and $200, if we're, if we're missing out on money here, that's going to be funding these, the policing of these SPRs. I don't want to be in that situation.
It, it, it just depends on the location.
Okay.
Mayor, and if I can, we can, a resolution for the fee structure would be outside of the ordinance. We could prepare that for you for the ordinance second read, and go through that fee structure.
So we could maximize the, the revenue produced if, if council should agree to that?
Yes, we can provide that cost benefit analysis.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That's sufficient?
Yes, and we can research some other communities as well, and bring it back with the fee resolution.
You want to wind it back?
Yes. These were the, do you want to take these next, or the other ones?
You're here.
These next? Okay, the other ones are more difficult. So exclusion of the recreational trailer parked in driveway. So we already have code requirements related to trailers. We, we're concerned about having two different sets of codes for folks in the neighborhood. How come, you know, why is this treated differently than that? That's why.
So you, you're looking for conformity?
Looking for conformity.
Mm-hmm. Vice Mayor, conformity, yea or nay?
Nay.
You want, wait, you, you want to be letting vacation people have trailers or not? Their neighbors, the neighbors, the neighbors do not, the neighbors do not.
And the parking becomes the problem again.
So you're not in favor?
Yeah, because, and again, you had mentioned boats too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and look, this is Florida. I love boats, you know? I'm, I'm actually, would like to keep my boat in my driveway if I could, but, right? I mean, and that's something a future council, I hope, will take a look at, but, but you get the trailer in there, you get the boat in there, you get how many cars if you've got?
Depends on the length of the driveway.
10, so you could have five cars, all that, it's a little too much.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I, I think that we need to exclude recreational trailers from the STRs. I also think, though, that they should be able to park in the garage. It's up, it should be up to the owner whether or not they want to store things in their garage, or they want to allow their renters to park in their garage. I mean, I, I know I've, I've rented STRs before where they give you the garage code and you can park in the garage. So just because they're related is why I bring it up. But yeah, I'm with you. I think we should exclude recreational trailers for STRs.
Councilman Clufus, we're talking about the recreational trailers. Should they be allowed or not allowed? The current code for the neighborhood does not allow them.
No, we do allow it. They do. We do allow it.
I'm sorry?
For three days.
I'm sorry, all right, I'm sorry. They do for three days.
Ooh, interesting. But I, I think that we should not have any more allowances for the short-term rentals than what the neighborhood is currently reporting.
Okay. So if I'm understanding everyone correctly, we have consensus?
I think we do.
Okay.
Mayor, can I just add one thing? And if you guys want to keep moving on, fine, but just point information. So right now, as written, the, the ordinance would allow boats or recreational in the driveway without drop, blocking any sidewalks, and without blocking the road or anything like that. They would only be on the STR's property in the driveway, which would not violate any ordinance right now, but also, it would only be allowed to be there for the three days. That's the requirement under our current.
Three days, which makes it, which makes it consistent with the, the current ordinance.
Yes. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there. If you guys still want to move forward, that's okay, but.
But we can change this. We can do what we want to do here.
Just for the STRs right now?
Yeah, you can.
Yes, I, I hesitate with that, because you could be setting yourself up there for some type of litigation of picking and choosing.
Well, then we'd be creating more work for you.
Well, I mean, yeah. I'm, I'm happy to always do more work for you, Vice Mayor, but I'm just, it wouldn't, it would not be good for me not to sit here and say, it could look like that you're picking them out, possibly discriminating them.
We are. We are picking them out.
Yes.
So, so here's, here's an alternative suggestion, and you tell me, counsel, if this will help alleviate, because I don't want us spending money on defending lawsuits. I think what's been expressed to me from our residents is that when we, when renters are in there, they have their boat trailer for three days, and then there's turnover, right? So those current renters leave, new renters come in. So technically, that three days has ended, and another three days has began. So now we just have this continuous onslaught of three-day allowance pursuant to the code. So could we maybe say that there, there shall not be trailers for more than 72 hours regardless of the owner? In other words, you can't have back-to-back-to-back people coming in with trailers, or no more than, you know, 70, trailers there for a 72-hour period over a seven-day period, something to that effect. Again, I'm just trying to see, I, I don't want us to be.
How would you even enforce it? I'm just, it's almost, it's self-curing.
And are people, in addition to the 10 people in the house, are there four people in the trailer too? And does that, does that continue on? I don't know.
No, no, so, yeah, there's not anybody in the trailer sleeping or living.
I, I think sometimes we might find ourselves in a situation where we might have to fight a legal battle. That's why we have legal counsel. And, and if we're trying to do the right thing here, then I think if we have to fight a battle down the road, then we fight the battle.
[applause]
So I, I think your point is well-taken when you start adding the, the cars. So you're taking up a certain, I'm not counsel, but one of your points would be, you are picking this group out separately because that property already has more cars than neighboring properties. So it's already different.
Yeah, and you're, you're also, you're, it could be an argument, you're penalizing them because they are an STR.
Yep, yep, understood, okay.
Well, I, I don't look at it as a penalty. I look at it as, there's no way for us to regulate the 72-hour period if we don't do this. I mean, to Mayor's, to Mayor's point, how do we regulate the 72 hours, you know, if we just have back-to-back-to-back three-day rentals with trailers? It's not, it's not practicable. So I think that, I think it's defensible. I, I just wanted to throw out the alternative.
So Councilman Clufus, just one more time. I need to know whether you are in favor or not. Are you in favor of excluding trailers?
Uh, in favor of excluding trailers, it's almost impossible to regulate them the same way that we regulate the current neighborhood because of the turnover. So I'm almost in favor of not allowing trailers in totality, but is that allowable from what I hear from council? I don't think it is. But if council says, you know, not allowing trailers, because that we would be seen as highlighting the STRs for this ordinance, is that also not advisable?
So I'm not, clarify, I'm not saying it's not allowed. I'm just trying to be on the offensive and be prepared down the road if someone does try to pick apart this ordinance. If council from this dais does want to move forward with not allowing trailers, we can write that in there, just since we're having this discussion, wanted to bring it up to you.
Can we, can we maybe do some case law?
Hold on a second. Hold on, Councilman Clufus, hold on one second, hold on.
I apologize, councilman. I didn't realize you were, you had another question. I, I was just asking council if we could do some case law research on that.
Councilman Clufus, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Also, I would just say, potentially what we do is we offer them, you know, hey, drop your boat in the canal, get your trailer out of there. We'd say, hey, park it. We find somewhere to say you can park your trailer. If you're here at the available location to park these trailers while you're enjoying Palm Coast, but as long as whatever recreation vehicle that they dropped off is, you know, not in the front yard of these STRs, I think that would probably.
That's either allowing them or not. Okay, I got it. I think we have consensus. Staff, do you have sufficient policy direction on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we will talk about the no garage. Our, our thinking there was that we're going to be asked to provide a certification that tells the number of parking spaces. If we include the garage, that's something that can change, that we would be, have a hard time inspecting or realizing until some period of time.
Do we need to micromanage on that level? I mean, do we really care whether or not there's a garage, a car in the garage? It's out of sight, it's not, it's clearly not bothering anybody. I don't think we need to micromanage on the level.
Code doesn't have the ability to look inside the garage anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I see that part too, right? If, as long as we say, all the, you know, you can, you can only use onsite parking, which includes the garage and the driveway. I think it was just because there's an advertisement that goes along with this, right? So we're, we're going to be asked to provide a certification. That certification is going to be developed to use the advertising. We can't tell you the number of parking spaces if the number of parking spaces change. What I can tell you is, in, in a, in a 40-foot driveway with a two-car garage, you could park four cars.
So why don't we, can we word it somehow where it says, you know, four parking spaces excluding any garage space? There's got to be a way to word this.
Oh, okay, for the advertise, for the advertisement, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. We'll, we'll work on it.
Good.
Yeah. We understand what you're saying, and we'll, we'll have to work. We may need to change another portion of the ordinance to achieve that, because one part is dependent on the other. Okay, so we'll, we can clean that up, though, and, and figure that out. Okay, did you have any questions on, or want clarification from Mr. Duffy on the next two, the cap, and on the location or proximity to each other? I have none. Okay. Those are the ones I described as would, would constitute a limit under state statute.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And again, we were contacted on Friday, and we met with these folks today. So I apologize for not having more information than this. The terms of service, rather than a sample lease, I think if you'll give us time to receive that terms of service, we could provide more information at your next meeting or via, or via email, unless you have strong thoughts on it now.
It's fine.
I, I don't know what the terms of service say, so I don't know, you know, okay, it's 110 pages, Barbara tells me. Allowing the responsible party to designate more than one person to satisfy the weekly monitoring requirement, that doesn't seem difficult. I think we can define that, if you are okay with that.
I think that's actually better if we have, like, maybe up to three people, in case the first one doesn't pick up, or, I mean, to me, that just makes good sense. I don't know what you all think about that.
I, personally, I'd rather see it 24/7, as opposed to designating the number of individuals, that they would be responsible for responding on a 24/7 basis.
Right, but I mean, I'm saying that if they could list it up to three people, that way there's not just, if they're, in other words, if we call that one person, they don't pick up. I mean, have they skirted their, their liability at that point? Then we can go, okay, this is the second person we would call, almost like a trickle-down.
Just add, we do have written in there, it's, they're supposed to be available 24/7, seven days a week, within two hours, be able to fix the problem.
Right. Okay. And we currently, we do allow them to designate a second, but this would expand it beyond that.
I don't have an issue with that, no.
Councilman Clufus?
No issue.
And, I mean, I hate to bring it up, but what if you're going to get one of those apps that you're texting a AI? Does that count as a person or not? Do we need to be clear about that? Because I, I could see that already.
Can the AI respond in two hours?
Well, no, but what you're calling into is not a person.
No, I know, but they still, they still have the duty to, to take action in two hours pursuant to the ordinance, so.
So regardless of whether it's AI or an answering machine, right?
All right.
I understand the concern, but.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, you have consensus.
Okay, we will confirm that it says that you, I'm looking for it real fast, but that they have to be able to respond to the property within two hours.
Even better, as opposed to, yes, we'll look into it.
Not just respond, right. We'll make sure we, we have that in there. Okay. The next one was related to licensure by DBPR and the Department of Revenue, and I don't know, I tried to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just to go back real quickly. So they have to respond, okay? So who are they responding to? How will you know? Or how will the neighbor know? Or how will the complainant know?
During the day, well, when.
24/7, right?
Right, right. When, when, during the day, it will be code enforcement.
See if you can't work that in.
Right.
Because if we're the only ones that know, and the people that are being, feel they're being harmed are not even made aware of what you're doing, you can understand my concern.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
The next one was related to DBP, uh, DBPR, the vision of business and professional regulation, and the Department of Revenue, and licensure, and the adding if applicable. I don't know, Marcus, if you thought I was, gave a good description of the concern or not?
Yeah, so their concern is saying that if someone was, had a one-bedroom, that there wouldn't be a license. I looked at the code, my interpretation of the code, it says that it's not required. It doesn't say anything that they wouldn't give them a license. Up to this dais, it's, it's up to you. I did reach out to the, the DBPR. I couldn't get ahold of anyone just to get clarification, but when I reviewed the code, it didn't say anything that they would not give a license. And that, that is a common thing that I got from when I was researching other ordinances. They had that in there. But if the dais wants to say if applicable, but that's fine, too.
So, Mayor, if I may, we have, Barbara just handed me a question that was asked of DBPR. Does the rental of individual beds or bedrooms in a personal residence require DBP, uh, be, DBPR vacation rental license? And the response is, no renting, renting use of a bed or single room or rooms other than the whole unit is not classified as public lodging. It would not require a license from DBPR, which is exactly what Marcus just said. Would not require. Now, the question is, would they issue if you asked for one? That's what we don't know. Now, the question is, would they issue if you asked for one? That's what we don't know the answer to.
I think we need to wait on that answer before we, but I, I mean, I don't like putting up if, if applicable. If anything, I would say we, we exclude specifically just that one rental of a bedroom and bathroom. But I would, I would rather wait on an answer, excuse me, from DBPR.
I agree.
Okay, provide a clear explanation of advertising.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clovis, are you good with that?
Yep, I'm good with that, that's absolutely okay.
Okay, go ahead, Jason.
All right, in, in 1768-9, under advertising, we currently have any advertising of the short-term vacation rental unit shall conform to information included in the short-term vacation rental certificate and property owner's approval, particularly as this pertains to maximum occupancy. So the point here is that they would only advertise for what they are approved for. So developing that certification is going to be important because that's what they're, they're going to advertise off of. The question here was, could we define it better? I think we could, if you would like us to. If you think that covers it, you can only, this is how I read it, you can only advertise to what has been certified by the city.
I think that's reasonable, yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
Councilwoman Clovis?
They're reasonable.
So no changes, okay? And then you, you already heard us say, we do not think that we should delete the requirements for battery-powered emergency lighting. Basically, this is, you know, where there, it's an exit lamp that is hardwired into the home. And if there's a loss of power, then the spotlights come on, but otherwise it's an illuminated lamp. It's, you know, an illuminated exit.
Now, that's, you're, you're picking them out again, the STRs, right? I mean, it's a safety concern.
No, that I don't, because I look at this as any other, A, we're not the only ordinance that have that, so I didn't, I wasn't originally with that.
Good enough. I'm good with it.
No, I, I think we should keep it, particularly with the hurricanes.
Yeah. Councilwoman Clovis?
I agree, specifically because of the hurricanes.
Okay.
Okay, and the final one is allow.
Let me just back up. So to add to your task list, probably every single one of them, with only a few exceptions, would need to add that before they were good to go, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Most, I would, I would say probably all of them need to.
I wouldn't say all, but many, okay.
And then allowing them, if they use a certain platform that already performs a background check on both the operator and the user, should they be allowed to op out of section 1773, which is related to sexual offenders and sexual predators?
So how are you going to, how are you going to follow that up?
I'm not sure, sir. I think the part that concerns me is that they could sign up for a service but then not actually use the service.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to protect the community, let's, let's go for it and let somebody challenge us. Of, of all the things we talked about so far, if you want to protect your, your neighborhoods, let them, let them challenge us on that.
Yeah, so there's one thing that I did want to point out that I do think is onerous on the owners. And that is doing a background check on all occupants. It is my opinion that a background check should be done on the person that books and the person that books must certify that nobody under their booking is a registered sex offender. And that then puts the responsibility on them, it doesn't require them to do 10 background checks for every single rental. I mean, that's just outrageous.
So when you say, just help me with the word certify, what does that mean? How, how would they, how would they know to be able to certify without a background check?
Well, I don't care how they certify, but, but it makes them liable if anything happens.
Makes them liable, but that's after the fact, yeah, all right.
Run a cheap background check, right, for 25 bucks, I think, or something.
150, but yeah.
Do you understand what that'll do to the cost of the rentals here?
$25?
Yes, if, if you have 10 people.
No, no, I'm talking about for that one person.
Yeah, for the person that's booking, it should happen, yes.
But I think you can do a very inexpensive, quick background check that would expose that.
No, I'm saying that should be done, yes, that should be done.
I agree, not for 10 people.
Not for all occupants.
But then you want to hold that person, okay, whoever signs the, whatever, accountable for everybody else.
Correct.
I, I think, now, I'm curious what the industry does in other places.
Well, that's why they're asking.
I can tell you, so I had an Airbnb in Jacksonville and we did have, that platform does do the background check for the, the people that are booking and for the owners as well. So we didn't have to go through that because it's already done. Like the, the people can't book through the Airbnb platform unless they, I think even a felony, I don't, it's not even a sex offender, I'm pretty sure it's if you have a felony. But, but I, we never had to do anything for all the occupants. We just held that person that was booking responsible for all the occupants.
I agree.
And that would also go, obviously, if there was more than one signature on the lease?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Ms. Ponteira, can you just give us a little more clarification on what you'd like staff to narrow this down? Based on your guys' conversation, I think that would just be helpful.
So I think the background check should be performed on the person making the booking itself. And then that person should be responsible for making sure all of their occupants are not a registered sex offender. The language should state, all occupants beneath your booking shall not be a registered sex offender, something to that effect. So that we still, we're still protecting the community, but again, to run 10 background checks on 10 occupants, it's crazy.
No, 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 I hear you, it's, it's a tough one.
Let's suppose we do that. Do we have any legal teeth if this person does bring a sex offender or anything? I don't know.
Well, I think they, they could definitely be sued. From a criminal standpoint, I'm not sure, but I know they, they would, I mean, they would be sued, definitely.
And we incorporate language that puts a fine for violating that or for allowing something to slip through the cracks?
I mean, your, your teeth here is going to be in the advertising. So when you're advertising the property, it's going to say, it's going, it's, it's going to have to say that that person, whoever signs up, is going to have to certify as the word used. That, that's the case, so, but I, I mean.
They certify, but one person has this background? Is there something in that contract or something that you would lose your?
Your what?
You know what I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I do think that that is, if you do violate that, I think that's a one-and-done, you lose your license with us.
So, and that's what I was going to kind of.
I only feel it's a day late and a dollar short in terms of the harm of the neighborhood, but maybe not. Yeah, I mean, the purpose here is to prevent it, not to respond to it.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm sorry, I don't have a better way, I, I don't, so, so I will, I am in consensus that we'll tie it to the, the, let's see.
Oh, we've done our, we've done what we're supposed to do to at least cover us and make sure.
Well, yeah, but I'd like, I'd really like to protect the neighborhood, but okay, I'm, I'm good with it. Councilwoman Clovis, any comment? You're good?
Yeah, it's a, I think a bit of an illusion of safety here, but I don't understand if, if we were to sue them, I don't, I don't know whether that's even an option because there would have to be damages, right? But I do think eliminating their license and not allowing them to participate in our short-term rentals in Palm Coast is absolutely the option. If somehow this situation were to occur and we did catch them.
Well, one more clarification, I'm so sorry. So right now, as written, it has about sex offenders not within 2,500 feet of a school. That was not brought up, I want to make sure you still want that same or you want the language being different?
You want to reduce it to zero, you want to go with 2,500?
Or do you want it applied, take schools out, want it applied universally? I, usually the ordinance that I saw wasn't regarding the schools. I can't say there's 100%, but I did not come across where there was an ordinance that was universal.
I would recommend taking schools out.
I would too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we're going to do it, that's, that's the hardest we can be. Councilwoman Clovis, are you okay with that?
That's good, please, bye-bye.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, if I can, I'll work with Mr. Duffy on this, but it was suggested to us perhaps that the operator has to maintain a registry of their renters for a two-year period, right? I'm just thinking this forward, okay? Let's say that they have, through this process, certified that they don't have any sexual predators staying with them, okay? But then it's, something occurs, but it takes a period of time for that to be determined, an investigation or whatever, right? Something comes out in the future, right? If they have a registry that we can link that person back in some way, then we can hold the operator accountable and remove their certification. Is that?
Work it out, okay.
I think that's fine, yeah. I also had, I had another question. And this was brought up by an operator. There was some list that publicly showed STRs and they had asked if we could not put that out just as a public list automatically, but that it'd be subject to FOIA, if somebody wanted to do a FOIA. Because apparently there have been crimes committed against STRs. And we want to avoid, you know, if somebody knows, hey, a unit might be empty or something to that effect for a certain amount of time. So I think that it should be public record if there's a, a public record request done, but maybe not just putting that out in the open to make these STRs susceptible to criminal activity.
Yes, ma'am, we, we agreed to, we agreed with the platform representative with that and described that our current rental program, we maintain a registry, but it's not publicly accessed. It's only available through public record requests.
Perfect, thank you.
And we would continue that with this project. I apologize, I believe I missed one here in the resident stakeholders, which was related to lighting. This is not the emergency lighting, this is exterior or lighting related to a lanai or, or pool deck. And our code already has requirements for downlighting and, you know, certain other requirements. We didn't think that it was necessary to add an additional layer. Also, it's very hard to measure as well.
Tell me what you just said.
Light pollution.
Light pollution.
It's, it's hard to measure, we already have an ordinance for lighting, outdoor lighting.
The residents, when we met with them, expressed concerns about lighting, particularly on the canal where it reflects off, off of the water.
We already have a light pollution ordinance, you said?
Mm-hmm.
I would need to look at it, I'm not prepared to answer that right now.
I'll get you a copy of it.
Okay.
That was all the questions we had, unless you have suggestions, other suggestions for us that you'd like us to look at?
I can't think of any.
The only, so I know there's an exemption for noise level for, I think it's tourism-related activities. The decibel level is 65 rather than 60, which is what everybody else is bound to. I want to make sure that STRs are not exempt from the same noise decibel requirement as everybody else.
They aren't.
Okay. So, wait, they're not, who?
So, way it's written is, it's, nothing has changed, they still follow our current noise ordinance that they have to follow all that.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Does that give you the, the policy direction that you were looking for?
Yes, sir, will.
Then I would open this up for public comment to see if we've missed anything that they may be concerned about, so. One at a time, okay? Come on, let's give each speaker their, let's give each speaker their, excuse me, let's give each speaker their fair chance to speak. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Celia Puglisi, I live here since 91. Already our ordinance for parking reads that it is prohibited and lawful to park or store a recreational vehicle for more than a total of three days or any part thereof in any consecutive seven days. So, you know, you can park for three days, but then the seven days have to be completed the week to be able to allow again to park for three days. So that can be a caveat there. One other thing is this, I live here enough and I know most ordinances will be the same for whether a long-term rental or residential or short-term rental. The problem is that on, on these short-term rentals, like people complain about the noise and all those complaints, what I think is, they were talking 275 units now you have. If they charge $200 per unit, will be $55,000 a year. If they charge 400, will be 110. That could pay for one additional inspector dedicated just, just to those complaints of those rentals. That is what the city needs to do. And the issue with these complaints is that, you see, here in Florida, if we complain, right, then they can release who was the idea of the complainer and then you get all kinds of paybacks. I did get a couple of times that, but I don't care, right? But all, all the other people are concerned, they have little children, whatever, they don't like the payback. So my advice would be to our Department of Code Enforcement, which they do a great job, having an officer just dedicated to those 275 rentals that might grow, and then they need to charge more, that they should be reactive, they should be proactive, not reactive. So if you have officers dedicated to the rentals and they should drive around these rentals, then they should, when they see a violation, they should not expect just a resident nearby to call for the violation, just address it because they just see it. Because I know that our court enforcement is pretty busy and they probably wait more for people calling on a violation than being proactive. So we are all subject to the same ordinances, they have, just to be informed.
Next speaker.
Janice Reed, E-section. If this is the first reading of this ordinance, where is short-term rental defined? Don't you think that should be like part of the ordinance? What is a short-term rental? Secondly, to install emergency lights, hardwired emergency lights in a residential unit requires you to tear the entire house apart and rewire the entire house. Has anybody thought about that? Do you actually know how to install, you have to run new wires to every location that you're going to put these lights in? Ridiculous. Third, why are you trying to shove this down our throat so quickly? We've already learned from the whole discussion that we sat here for an hour and a half listening to about the bond ordinance, what happens when you try to do things too fast? You completely screw it up. Why are we trying to get this done in three weeks? This is insane. I think you need to talk to a lot more people, I think you need to talk, you know, this through, think things through. Don't always assume the worst-case scenario. How many of those 275 rental units have you actually had a complaint about? Five or six maybe? Well, then deal with them. Because the majority of us who own rental units don't have a problem. I haven't had a complaint in 12 years from anybody in the neighborhood. I abide by all the local ordinances, so do my tenants, and it's not a problem. So you really need to slow this down, think it through, and get it right. And don't shove it down our throat too quickly, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, next speaker, please.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Once again, we didn't wake up this morning and say we're going to discuss this. You knew ahead of time that there was only going to be four, possibly only four councilpeople who could vote. So that means that it could be a two-to-two vote again. But now going back to my next question, who's going to inspect these houses? Because now technically they're a business. So if you're going to operate a business in Palm Coast, you're going to need electrical, building, plumbing, fire, code enforcement. Who's going to pay for these inspections? The guy that owns the house? The guy that lives, lives in the house may not know the rules of Palm Coast. So that means that if somebody comes in and wants to rent your house and you're going to charge him, I don't know, $4,000 to the week and he's got a camper or he's got a boat, who's going to come and tell him that he can't? He's going to be there two or three days and he's going to get told, oh, you gotta, you can't have your boat on a lot. Again, what, we've been talking about this for months because back a couple of months ago, we asked the city attorney to investigate the proper language. So when it came back to the city and it came back to the public, it would be clear and there wouldn't be any questions. Well, here it is, two months later, and every time you have a question, you got to ask them. Well, he should have, he should be giving the report. Well, he should have, he should be giving the report instead of Mr. DiLorenzo. Because he's the guy who's going to tell you, yes, you can do it or no, you can't do it. But again, what is the big hurry to get this through? It's not like we live in a, in a winter community where people are going to be moving out of here in a couple of months. This is going to go on all year long. But again, the people that are sitting here are not going to be here by the time this ordinance gets passed. You're not going to be here. So again, why try to shove this down our throats until such time comes as we have a full sitting council? Mr. DiLorenzo and Mrs. Grossman can come back and say, okay, here's all the questions, here's all the answers. Now the council can vote on it intelligently. And if the residents have a question, they can then raise their hand and say, hey, I got a question. What about this? What about that? But nobody has said in Mr. DiLorenzo's elegant comments, who's going to pay for all the inspections? Is the homeowner going to pay for them? Is the renter going to pay for them? Who's going to pay for them? Or is this, better yet, who's the, is the city going to pay for them? Because now every time you send an inspector out, he's on a clock. So I want to know who's going to pay for the inspections.
Next speaker.
Hi, we're Jolene and Kathy Davidson. We work, we have an Airbnb out of our home. We've been doing this for nine years and we absolutely love what we do. We have a 4.9 rating. We've been super host for nine years. We have over 1,600 reviews. What your decisions affect us and our Airbnb pays for our living. So your decisions affect us. Please consider what you're saying and what you're doing to the residents.
Thank you. No, you can, no. Go ahead.
He's with me.
That's right, he can have his own time. He can have his own time.
Okay, all right. I encourage you to just pay attention to what we do. We pay our taxes, we do everything right. We don't, we have a very peaceful home. We live there and we oversee everything that is going on to make sure nothing happens and everything is going well. So I please ask you to really consider what you're doing because I love what we do and I don't want to, to lose that. So when you're talking about, and I want to present this thought, what I hear is two people per room. We have, we have families that come to our homes. I cannot tell children, parents, your mother, your father, and your child is not allowed to be in that bedroom. What do we do with the child? I have an air, I have an air mattress that provides for that child, for the families to be together. We have a Jack and Jill situation to where we have, parents can be in one room and the children could be the other, but it's a Jack and Jill. But the children are allowed to be with their parents. They come swim, they have a good time, they get away. I don't want to lose that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So what you're hearing, there's a lot to think about besides what has been discussed. I appreciate all the hard work. But as Kathy said, we've been super hosts for 10 years. We've welcomed guests from all over the world. We're not a party house. Now, there are legitimate concerns. I read online, this stuff is not addressing the legitimate concerns. It's kind of like a farmer that wants to kill a fly. The fly is on the cow, so he blows up the cow. Have some rules for houses where the owners don't live there and the homes are owned by people from out of state and they're not there, they don't ever know what's going on, to actually address the problems like in the C-section that people were talking about. But to take people like us and to make a bunch of rules doesn't make a lot of sense. Our guests are like family. So we would like to be included in a workshop. We've been doing this 10 years. We've had thousands of guests. And they should be interviewing homeowners about these things. So this is really just creating bigger government, which we don't want bigger government. I don't think any, well, I guess some people do. But there should be different rules for local homeowners versus out-of-state investors. Leases, the word lease was there. We leave, people, people, people sign up through Airbnb at 5:00 PM. They show up two hours later to stay at our home. Can't do a sex offender check. Airbnb does that. So there has to be an exclusion for Airbnb. They do those checks, terms of service, background checks, leases and stuff. All that's through Airbnb. We had a baseball team with their coaches. Stay with us. There was more than 12 people, but the coaches were with the baseball team. We lived there. We were house overseers. We had a group of 16 people from China came in one group, lovely people. They all stayed in our home. We were there. We had a cheerleading team with their coaches, over 10 people, over 12 people. Their coaches, so they're, these rules are like, it's made by people that are not thinking about real life here. We have a six-bedroom home, by the way, that we live in and we rent five bedrooms out. Remedies and importments, creating a bureaucracy, all this stuff. Weekly monitoring requirements. This is a bureaucracy, a bureaucracy we don't need. Licensing is just another cost. We already collect a 5% tourist tax from the guests through Airbnb. We turn it into the local tourist tax to help fund the beaches and things. It's important money. They add 2% if you want as an extra tourist tax. Let the people that are coming to stay at our home pay 7% local tourist tax instead of 5%. But don't put us through having to get another license and all that kind of stuff. Registration, creating a code. The Bike Week trailers, we have people here for Bike Week, nice lovely people. They bring their bike in a bike trailer. That needs to be allowed. And make decibels, make the decibel requirements lower for, for STRs than they are for homeowners. That will fix a lot of the problems.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay. Next speaker.
I agree with everything everyone else has just said. I'm a local homeowner, Airbnb host as well. I've got a three-bedroom house. I welcome families, so I welcome two, two parents and a child. I give an air mattress for that child. So there needs to be allowances for that, for young families to be able to stay. The background checks, Airbnb does that for us. For us to, from what I've understood, you're basically saying for us to do a background check. Well, somebody books at 11:30 at night, they show up at midnight, they leave at 8:00 AM. They're only here for a night. We can't, for one, do the background check for one second. Airbnb does not allow us to have their driver's license. So we can't do a background check. We can't get their social security number. We're not allowed to get that information. So we cannot do background checks via Airbnb. It's not possible. We would not be allowed, we would not be able to rent via Airbnb, which is our sole income. I don't do VRBO. I don't do those other platforms, neither do my parents. They, we do Airbnb and we're not allowed to get that information. And then, and then I agree with everything else that everyone just said. Parking, as long as people can park in the driveways. We don't allow people to park in the grass. We tell them upfront that they're not allowed to park in the grass overnight per the Sydney ordinance. They have to park in the driveway. There should be allowances for the Bike Week trailers. So, yeah. Yeah, just bring down the noise ordinance like they said. So, like, like, like my dad just said, the stuff that you guys are bringing up does not address the actual issues. The, the comments online is, is mostly the C-section and those are corporations that bought up those houses and rent those out and owners do not live there. We live right here in town. My parents live in their home. We're able to monitor every situation. My home, my husband and I monitor that 100%. We're very strict with our rules. We have very strict rules in our house and per the city ordinances. And none of our, our guests break those rules. They're very quiet, very quiet, peaceful environment. So don't punish us, law-abiding citizens and our, and our, and our rule-following guests because of other corporations that buy up all these houses.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor and city council members. Teresa Panteri, thank you for your, for your help in this matter. And the city managers, you've worked very hard on this. Occupancy of 10 people. I'll bet there's not a person in this room that has a family with 10 people in their house in our community. So I'll bet there isn't. Your family with 10 people would be a lot of people in a home. I've rented Airbnbs, VRBOs in, in other areas and we had a total of six adults and that's a lot of people. So 10 is not, is not unreasonable. As for who's going to pay, the registration fee of 400 and 200 a year is pittance. They get 3,000 a week, 4,000, 5,000 a month is what they're advertising online. That is nothing. I would say $1,000 and $500 a year thereafter. That'll pay for all of this, the inspections, it'll pay for the code enforcement, it'll pay for all the efforts going into this. Our code enforcement right now is overwhelmed. And I think that Barbara and her crew does a great job, but we can't, they can't address all the complaints we've had from the absentee owners. I'm really sorry about the people that live here and have Airbnbs that really watch what their guests are doing, but you are at a minority. There are so many LLCs from out of town that do not care. There are so many renters that come in that just do not know our community, have no respect for us. And we are, we are subject to this every day. Numerous trailers, numerous cars, cars in swales, garbage cans in front of the house all week, then rolled out to the garage, to the, to the end of the driveway and then put back in. You might as well have a dumpster out front. And this is what's going on. It's not, it's not a uncommon occurrence. I can go right now and look at the Airbnbs and even in our community and see garbage cans everywhere. So I think that that has to be addressed. And the last thing was about the trailers. I think that's a good idea not to have any trailers. We have found now three local areas that will rent trailers on a daily basis. So just like you reserve your car when you come in on vacation, reserve the spot for your trailer ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. Just kind of piggyback off of what that gentleman's saying. It is unfortunate because there are members of the community here that do care about their Airbnbs and do want the community to do well. Unfortunately, the scrupulous players out of state, investing, big companies aren't here to justify their actions. It seems to be the biggest issue is obviously 10, 12, how many residents? And I think that one thing that is being grossly overlooked is when we were talking about, I believe it was Seminole Woods and I also believe it was Hidden Lakes, the apartments that were going in. I'm going to butcher this because quite frankly, I've been out of town for a few weeks and I haven't been able to read up on all of this. But there was 2.5 was the number of heartbeats allowed per room when they were doing the census and the impact as far as how much like traffic was going to be in the roads and all of that. So why do we not just do X amount per livable space with no cap? So that way you could say, if there's a three-bedroom, it automatically is capped at six residents. If it's a four-bedroom, it's automatically capped at eight residents. And if it's like that gentleman's house right there, he would be capped at 12 because it would be unfair to that. The other things I was going to ask about is as far as the trailers go. So what I see in the C-section a lot of times is, and unfortunately, one of the reasons why the C-section is so targeted in this is because we do have the amenities of the canals over there. And we're drawing in a certain type of tourism dollar. And by doing away with the trailers, I just, I'm concerned like, are we, we don't have industry in this town to begin with. So we need every single bit of tax dollars that we can get. Are we going to be disincentivizing people by not letting them do that? Now, I don't think it should be carte blanche and I've made the suggestion for work trucks and other trailers, but could we not implement some sort of permit fee that says, hey, if you want to have a trailer in the driveway, it is going to be X amount of dollars extra? And then to double down on that, the 400, 200, is that just arbitrary numbers? Or is that actually going to fund our code enforcement that we need? Because as from my understanding, we don't have enough code enforcement to do this. So we need to make sure that those numbers are correct, even though it could affect the end cost for the consumer. Additionally, just from a quick Google search, the sex offenders have to register with local law enforcement if they're going to be establishing for more than three days from out of state. And there's other regulations, so I also recommended this. Maybe we work with Sheriff Staley to see what the regulations are and what the requirements are per the state so we can figure that out. And then additionally, just to find penalties and revocation of permit, I may have missed it, but if there's, if there's like a strong structure of like, if you do this, X, Y, and Z, you will have your permit revoked, basically. Instead, I mean, not to single up Miss Panteri, but she's like, oh, you'll definitely lose your license if you do this. But that's kind of like wishy-washing to me. We need to have a set structure that says, if you do this, you lose it because of this and this is the fines that accompany it. In addition to, one of the things that I didn't really see talked about was, they can give notices, but if there's three-day turnaround times, you have to be implementing fines directly on-site to these people or else they're going to be gone. And I get the trailer concern too. Right, the three days turns into six days, which turns into nine days because you're constantly cycling. But that's why it's so pertinent to make sure that we are charging the correct fees in order to assess the code enforcement correctly and make sure that we're funded.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. There's a sign that you, you see when you enter Palm Coast. It says, no commercial trailers, boats, RVs parked in residential areas. You know, some of these vacation people come for a week or two weeks at a time and they're going to come. And we can't allow them to park their stuff because Palm Coast residents can't park it in the driveway. You know, and like Peter just said, maybe somebody could pay a fee to park a trailer in their yard if they're paying a fee. Maybe that's a solution, I don't know. But you can't let outsider, you know, people from out of state come and just, come into our town and avoid the rules that we have to have, you know? And it's not fair. It's a, maybe if we could increase the code enforcement program to where they can go out more, you know? Not just on a, because somebody calls and complains. Now, a lot of people won't complain now because they got to give their names. It's not anonymous. But maybe they could just go out once a month and just cruise their neighborhood. You know, maybe get a few more officers, you know? That would help. Plus it could bring revenue for Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Elfin, Council. I'm Quinn Cressy from C-section. I want to address just a few issues very quickly. First of all, as a very active part of the CCC, I do believe that there'll be a lot of support for excluding owners who live in their property from these ordinances. I have seen a different city, I can't remember which one it is now that does differentiate between people who live in their home and are there to actively manage the people that live in their home versus those that stand independent of that. I believe we would like to see sleeping room rather than, I know you've discussed it a lot, but sleeping room rather than, because it's so very significant, very precisely defined in the ordinances. I think regarding the 24/7 hotline, I think that is really the place where we can make a big difference in having to spend money on code enforcers. If there is a hotline 27, 24/7, if we hear noise at 3:00 in the morning, we can call the hotline. The hotline immediately calls the person on call. The person on call tries to deal with the issue by calling the residents. It could be nipped in the bud right there. If it's not the owner, the person on call calls the police, not the resident. I think that if it's a noise complaint, dealing with it immediately makes a huge difference. If it is a trash issue or, you know, something, then the two-hour time, you know, to get to the house and deal with it makes sense. I do want to make a, first of all, regarding the sexual predators issue. You know, we just recently had 10 to 12 young men about, you know, about 20 years old, all coming to the Airbnb across from us. And if one of those people said, okay, we, we, you know, we're responsible for everybody else. I didn't know that they would know what the other's sexual predator history was. So I would suggest that we do that for everybody over 18 or have some sort of limit like that. The other thing that I want to address very quickly is, let me just check this out here. There are a few other things that we would like to be involved in with the advertising requirements, including trespassing issues as well. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Roger Cressy from C-section. I wanted to first of all start by saying thank you. Thanks for all that you have done. We are very grateful and thank you for all the time you've taken, for the consideration in meeting with us, in representing the Canal Community Coalition. We're a nonpartisan group, Democrats, Republicans, independents. But we've come together on this issue because we want our residents back. We want to have peaceful properties and live peaceful lives. We've actually seriously been considering selling our house. It's that drastic. And unfortunately, there seem to be some people here who do manage their Airbnbs well. But in our area, there are three. One is well-managed. The other two are a nightmare. So it's unfortunate that some have to suffer for the others, but I'm afraid that that's really the position that we are in is that we want these in place to protect us. So really just... So really just, you're often the target of criticism. I want to thank you for this. Thank you for what you have done. It's appreciated. And thank you. So we are still concerned that the ordinances will not protect us enough. We think that the stricter you make them upfront, the less problems we'll have going forward. But really, just to end on a positive note, you've taken a lot of heat on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Randy Kroll, C-section, Palm Coast. So what's the definition of a home? The place where one lives permanently? These are not homes. These are businesses, and they should be treated as such. You have exit signs. That's what businesses are required to have. These people over here, people are staying in their homes. Maybe they shouldn't have to adhere to these rules. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Hi, Mike Solera, C-section. I live on a street that's kind of short, and right now we just have one short-term rental, but there's two houses are going to be up for sale, and we also have two long-term rental houses on our street. So we're all on a street concerned that if something, you know, they sell or they decide to go from long-term to short-term, that, you know, now we're going to be outnumbered by these short-term rentals. The one we have, it hasn't been too bad. We've had a few incidences with them, and they've been pretty good about, you know, straightening it out. As far as those lights and stuff, I worked in electrical field for a long time. You don't have to rewire the whole house. You probably have to put one breaker in and then wire them together, but that's something that you all would hash out. As far as the other people though, they're living on the premises, so it's a little different. There's control there where they can say, hey, you're making too much noise, be quiet. The other ones, we don't have that luxury where we can say, okay, they're making too much noise, we call the police. The police come, they tell them be quiet, they leave, they get noisy again. I think we need to have some rules, you know, now that we've got the opportunity to have these rules, that we should try to get some rules and make it good for everyone. And the people that, you know, like the C-section does seem to be a party area where we got a lot of people, they're bringing their boats, they're coming down our canals, they're making big wakes, they got the radio blasting with music that's not fit for kids to hear, drinking, people with their feet hanging over the bow, which is illegal. If they fall over, they're going to drown, get run over. It'd be nice to see the police patrol hide down the canals a little bit, and when they see something like that, maybe address it. I've only seen them, I've been there seven years, I've seen the patrol on my canal twice. There's a marker down the street, down the canal from us that says, slow, minimum wake or no wake. It'd be nice if they would put another one to, it would be the north, I believe, of that, so people would see that and maybe know not to be going too fast to make an awake. And I think that was about all I had to say, but we thank you. If you can do anything to help everybody, you know, it would be great. And maybe some of the money that, you know, as far as these fines, maybe they can be used to help pay for these extra enforcement that, you know, needs to be used on the ones that are misusing the short-term rental.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Mindy Melendez, the F-section. When you go to rent an apartment, you have to have a driver's license. Anybody over 18 has to show their driver's license. So I think that is not asking too much. I have two children still at home, a 17-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son, that I can't take back their innocence if a sexual predator comes and hurts them. I can't protect them from that. My 17-year-old is home alone at times, and I think that is an important feature that needs to be put in place. Because as parents, we're to protect our children. And I adopted my five-year-old, and my job was to protect him. And I need to know that I can protect him and not have some sexual predator running around my street.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Regina Bernier, in the R-section. I have an Airbnb, four-bedroom, they advertise it as five, with a swimming pool. Bring all their friends and family of Palm Coast, and up to five cars are in front of my driveway. I cannot go out of my driveway, and they don't care, and the garbage all over the, I, I don't understand it. Something should be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Fred Sinclair, I'm in C-section. We moved there in 2018 because of Palm Coast was what it was. And the dynamics of our community is drastically changing. We got an Airbnb, I guess you'd call it, behind our canal. I don't believe the owner's been there since three years, and they're out of state. You mentioned something about the canals and the boat regulations and the trailers. I think the elimination of trailers will help a lot. We end up with two or three boats sitting, you know, sitting out back and it's probably only set up for one boat. They bounce off the sides. We find dings in our boats, in our boat. I don't know which one, which one bounces off our boat, but that's a constant stress point for us. The fee, the $200 fee, I would recommend that you take a step back and make sure that that would cover the enforcement. So we're not here two years later, and we got great, some great hope here, but that the fees would cover the personnel. So it should be self-funded. Need some help with the boats, but I think the parking or the elimination of the trailers will help a lot. It'll force them to find an off-site place to park them at. So that should minimize some of that. I mean, we see these guys come in, in and out two, three times during the day, emptying the fish, going back out because, you know, you've got FWC regulations and they don't follow regulations. I don't even know if they got fishing licenses. And I would, I would say check the fines, you know, make sure we got meat in them, that you can enforce them. I think I've seen something up there about if they're not paid in 12 months, or at the 12 months you won't renew it. It seems to me that we would have some meat somewhere in between, that if you got some pretty significant violations and they're not paying their fees, that they're suspended. That's about it. Again, I commend you. I appreciate you. You're giving us some hope.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
There's a very fine line between...
Just please introduce yourself for the...
Yes, Chantal Pruninger. There's a very fine line between giving enough regulation and too much regulation, and none of us wants to finish up leaving long enough to have how many times a minute we can breathe. So that being said, the driveway issue, if it's okay with the owners to have a car parked in the garage, why not? Why the city has to regulate that? If the driveway is big enough to include nine cars and, and some people come with two cars, why not fill that driveway as long as they're not in the street? The weekly monitoring is really abusive. It's an invasion of privacy. You have somebody come to your home every week to check if everything's okay. You would not want that in your own home. And who would you, the back, no, who would check the weekly monitoring? That would be the code enforcement? So if I get that right, people who rent a place, they pay $200 or $400, or $200 or $400 per week, per month, per year, what's the idea? And, and that will help the code enforcement to come and check on them? The background check, okay? Either it's for all or it's for nobody, because if you don't check those who come from other countries, I mean, how can those get away with it? We have problem with the people coming illegally in the States. We don't know who they are, but we can't check on them? If they, if they come and rent a place to you, you can't check on them, but you can check on other people, it just doesn't make much sense to me. Two people per room, how about a couple that comes with a baby or young child? You say that kid goes in another room, it's a, it's a place he's never seen before, but can't be uninfertible. Now, I don't have Airbnb, I don't have a place to rent like that, but if I had neighbors who rented the place, what I would look for is, are they noisy? Do they make noise, excessive noise after 10 o'clock? Do they park all over so we can't even get out of our own driveway? Do they do drugs? Do they drink? Are they dangerous for our children to be around? That's what I would focus on.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Yeah, Andrew, Palm Coast. So I'm a big property rights advocate, so I'm really sorry for those short-term renters who are following the rules and getting punished by, you know, the ones that are not. But in meeting residents, I will say that this is a really big, this is a number one issue for a lot of people that live here. And they, you know, their quality of life is really affected by a lot of these short-term rentals. So I would say a couple of questions that I have as far as the 400, 200 amount, I'm curious if that, if that's a researched, you know, if that amount is researched, you know, I'm just, I'm doing the math here, I'm not a mathematician, but 275 rentals at 400 is about 110,000, which from my understanding, you guys were saying that a code enforcement, an additional code enforcement employee would cost the city about $100,000. So if, you know, if we were to make that fee across the board, if it's an annual fee, $400 a year is about, you know, 30 some dollars a month anyway. So when I was talking to residents, the three issues that I really found that was most important to them were the sound, you know, late night parties, things like that, too many cars parked in the, you know, so they can't maneuver into their own driveways, and then parties. So I think this is a good discussion to have because we're addressing a lot of those things. I have a question about the violations, you know? We should probably build that out a little bit more. How many violations would, you know, take to say, hey, we can't have this as a rental in Palm Coast anymore? And then I also have some concerns about the complaint process. So, you know, the difference between a really good Airbnb with no complaints and one with a lot of complaints kind of depends on the neighbors. So if there's a process to kind of vet complaints as well, to make sure that, you know, there's not over complaining going on in the neighborhood, I think that would be a good thing to kind of build out just to make sure. And then lastly, I've had a lot of businesses come and say, tourism business say, you know, we don't really have anywhere to advertise and market our, you know, our tourism, our tourism business. So a good thing might be is, you know, another avenue for revenue, and this could be for the city, it could be for a private, you know, a private enterprise, but advertising some of our tourists' opportunities in these Airbnbs, just to get the word out so they can get their businesses known. So thank you for my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Julia Connolly from the C-section, and I wanted to bring up a few things about density. And I know we've had a discussion about density and that it's very, nearly impossible to regulate. However, the situation on my street, and I have almost 30 homes just on my street, I have three Airbnbs within three doors from me. There's one more home right across the street from me that's going up for sale, and we're all, this trigger, you know, like, really nervous about whether that one's going to be a short-term rental. There's another elderly couple that are in their 90s, and that house will probably also be on the market. So I'm looking at possibly five Airbnbs within three doors of me. So that is one thing to keep in mind. And I, and clearly, the people who host from their own home is a, is a different issue. But the C-section is, has some unique problems, and having the proximity of so many houses together, we have seen, it's, it's basically like having a class reunion, because, you know, if you have 10 or 12 people, that's 36 people who have vehicles and everything, and they're, they're, they're gathering for celebrations. But it's, it's quite a burden on our single-family neighborhood where we chose to live. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to work through this, but I hope you would keep those things in mind.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no speakers, let me close public comment. Vice Mayor, I just want to make one comment real quick.
Go, go ahead.
If I can.
And then I want to clarify some stuff.
Yeah, no, no, just as an umbrella. You know, you've heard a lot, and we're, we're kind of guessing the magnitude of the importance of getting this in play before the next legislative session. And the reason I say that is I'm concerned that you've heard enough. I mean, I don't know how comfortable you are with the consensus that we have established this evening. I, I thought it was a lot to digest in, in a relatively short timeline. So go ahead, what's your comment?
Oh, I, I just want to clarify one thing, and I, I think we're all in agreement. When we put a number like 10 people per house, we're not saying that only two people can be in a bedroom. You could take two people and their two kids and put them in one bedroom. We're not saying per bedroom. We're just coming up with a number for the house. I like the idea if it's, you know, if it's a five-bedroom house, 10 people, if it's a six-bedroom house, I'd be happy to go to 12 people, but we're not telling people how many people in a bedroom. I don't care if you put all 10 people in the bedroom. That's up to you. I mean, it's kind of crazy. But I do also think that I want to make sure that whatever we do, that we are self-funding this. If we add an additional code enforcement person, we are, we are funding that paycheck, we are funding those benefits, we are funding the vehicle that they will be using. I don't want us to add an additional person and burden the taxpayers on that.
Let me, just so we don't have to go backwards, are you willing to give staff the opportunity to forecast what that expense might be?
Yes, yes.
Because here's the thing.
And I was getting...
It's very difficult right now to calculate what that could possibly be.
I, I was getting to that. So we need to look at what we will be charging fee-wise to make sure that we're not taking taxpayer dollars to pay for this. The other thing is, on the sex offender things and the Airbnb, do they do the background check?
Yes, they do.
So we don't...
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, let's, let's don't ask the public.
I'm not, I'm asking Jason and Barbara.
Okay, or Council.
Or Council. I don't care which.
Okay.
Council, they, they do this, correct?
Yeah, they, they said that they do. I don't know what type of background check they do.
Okay, so we need to look into that, and if that serves our requirement of that type of thing, then I think that could be sufficient. There's no reason to have the homeowner, the property owner, do it separately if they're already paying for it to be done. I've never done an Airbnb, so I don't know how it even works.
And the other, the other, the flip side of that is if you have international renters, the comment was made before that there may not be access to that data.
Yeah.
It's a question.
I understand, it's a question. And for staff. I think we can all agree that the absentee owners are the majority of the problem here, not our local residents. You know, and it's unfortunate, you know, a few bad apples can...
So let's, let's...
But, but I think we do need to keep...
But let's, let's pause there. Your point is well taken. Legally, is there any way, you know, zoning is not the right word, is there any way to differentiate without creating a legal issue? Those that live in the home, obviously, one, or local owners as opposed to owners that are remote? Can, can there be classes set up that are legal?
The short answer is yes. There is a way. If direction from this dais, staff and I can look in that and look at the appropriate language.
So I think that's the direction I want to give staff, is to see how we can separate...
Absolutely. Why, why wouldn't you want to know?
So the other thing too, I, I think it's important to note is, we want to get this right. So we don't need to rush, rush to do it. I'm glad we're doing what we're doing tonight, but I want the public to know is the reason we're bringing this up, the reason is we're listening to your public comment and having these conversations, is hopefully to do it right.
Well, you're also looking at a new governor who, this current governor didn't sign off on it, the next one might.
Right, yeah.
So that's why the clock is ticking. However, are you willing to forfeit, forfeit the process in anticipation of something that you really don't know?
Oh, okay.
What the actions of the next governor may be?
I just want to make sure, and I'm counting on staff, you know, to come back to us with the answers to these questions. And I think, again, by separating the absentee owners and the local owners, we're going a long ways for that. I would also, somebody mentioned electrical work, putting in lighting or whatever. You don't have to rip out your walls to do that. You can actually, there are ways to do this, running it outside on the walls. And it's not as elaborate. I don't want people to think they're going to have to tear out their sheetrock.
Let's let staff, they got a building department, let them handle the detail work.
Well, this is very simple if you've owned a home.
No, but policy, we're looking at policy here. Councilman Pontieri.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So I do want to find an objective way to differentiate the owners. We just need an objective way to do that. And then we'll need to figure out, I don't think that they should be exempt from all of these regulations. So we will, as a policy, have to figure out which regulations are exempt from. I would like to see a fine and a fee schedule that's more thoroughly worked out, looking at fees as far as cost recovery, like Vice Mayor said, and then fining that do have some teeth, and timelines to pay those fines, all of those things. I know we didn't really discuss that tonight, but I'd like to see that in the future. My last thing is, I do have a concern about people making complaints and their identities being revealed the same way they would if they made a normal code enforcement complaint. So I don't know if there's a way around that. I don't know. I know that there's been talk about a 24/7 hotline, and it's my opinion that the fees that the Airbnb owners, or I shouldn't say Airbnb, the STR owners would have, would presumably cover that 24-hour hotline. But have we even looked into that, is really my question?
I can tell you that I spoke with the Hollywoods, Florida, and they outsource and they pay $35,000 to $50,000 a month for a 24/7 service. And they don't even really have that, it's kind of misleading because a lot of, they make no calls, they're all done email, and they could be done morning. I spoke to the manager that does the STRs there.
So Barbara, you did look at subcontracting this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, because I didn't hear that mentioned before. And it was not cost-effective in your opinion at that time?
Well, they also have around 9,000, 1,900, excuse me.
So it wasn't a comp?
No.
Yeah, and I thought that's what we had looked at. So I don't know. I think we just need to kind of brainstorm there. Because I do think it's important that people be able to call in and make complaints without feeling the threat of repercussion.
Unfortunately, the way it reads in the code right now, that government, I mean, the statute that Governor DeSantis signs, it only is an imminent threat. That's the only time that we can't get a name and address. So if there was an unsecure pool, if there was a wildfire hazard, something of that, then we could go without a name and address. But when it's a complaint that is not an imminent threat, they must, they cannot be anonymous.
Okay. And then the last thing that I would like just to be checked on, I think platforms like Airbnb would probably do a better background check than the $25 background check you're referring to. So I think we need to look into that, just to see what kind of background check is actually done. And if it is satisfactory, then we can go that route. But I don't know enough about it to make sure it would satisfy our concerns.
Councilwoman Clovis, any final comments? And then I'm going to ask the city manager a question.
For sure. Number one, I think that it's going to be very difficult for us to be coordinating the background checks, especially with the information that's available where even the people who are hosting them don't have all the information necessary for a detailed background check. Number two, we haven't discussed the maximum allowable Airbnbs for a single person or entity to own in Palm Coast and operate. I think that's a great way to keep bigger operations out of Palm Coast. And I think, from what we've heard from the public, that that would preclude some of our individuals who live in their homes and they Airbnb them. You know, they are the good actors, and they're getting spooled in here together. But those two things, I don't think we're going to be able to do background checks, especially for sexual predators and these things. We're not policing people, we're policing the Airbnb. And I think that should fall on Airbnb. And number two, I think we need to discuss how many allowable Airbnbs a person can operate into the city boundaries.
City manager. What staff has heard, what the public has said, obviously, all, there's consensus that it needs to be done well, it needs to be done correctly and right, and hopefully long-lasting. How much time do you want to tell us you need to come back? And I'm assuming that this probably needs a workshop of its own? Would you all think that? Because all of our, if you look forward at our agendas, they're pretty full. Or if you're willing to let it roll forward, I'm not opposed to that either.
It's like, how much time do they need to come back to it?
Well, it's a hard question, I understand that. But I don't want to... He's the one that costs money, you guys.
In, by mutual eye contact, at least two weeks, please.
Well, just, so be careful, because you were asked to check a lot of comps or other places. I don't know how long that takes. So if you're telling me...
So can I, let me just see if I can try and help with this. So we could perceivably bring it back to a workshop. You do have a workshop scheduled for September 24th in the evening, which you requested to go through District 4 vacancy.
So how many items are on that? So it's not overloaded with, you know, three feet of important items?
One, right now, with the District 4 vacancy seat.
Okay, okay, that works. Well, I don't want to do, I don't want it to get lost in a long agenda like this. So people have to sit and not be able to comment after waiting through so much. Because there's obviously, it's, there's a lot of sentiment throughout the community, and there's some very complicated issues, which could become very serious legal issues if we don't do it absolutely correctly.
There's two items on that workshop, then. Vacancy and...
Well, that's up to the city manager at this point.
Is that what you're saying, Lauren?
As of right now.
As of now. There's a qualification there, okay. Very good. All right, council.
Just a reattack on some comments that the dais made. So one, for fines, we are required to follow the due process requirements with the statute. So we can't just automatically just fine someone, they need to go to the Code Enforcement Board. And like Barbara already talked about, they can't be anonymous, unfortunately, under the system. Second, we cannot, the statute that is governing this says, "A local law ordinance regulation may not prohibit vacation rentals." So we cannot limit how many vacation rentals are in this city. If someone wants to have 100, as long as they're buying legally, they're following our ordinances, we cannot prohibit them from having, unless they do not follow the rules, and they do not say we put a lien against their house because they're not paying the fines. That would be a way. But if they're following the rules, we can't limit them.
Okay. All right, so Councilman Clovis, you're good with the...
So I have one more question. So can we make the scale of the rates that they pay increase almost exponentially for the higher number of Airbnbs you operate in Palm Coast? So it's $400 right now, what we talked about earlier for the first one. But if you have 10, that 10th one costs you $1,500 to try to deter that type of behavior.
All right, Mr. Duffy.
I would advise against that because reading the statute, you can't prohibit the duration, and you can't prohibit, someone would argue by upscaling how much it costs to have two or three, you're prohibiting them from having a short-term rental.
And I just think our discussion goes a lot further if we get clarification on the, I'll call them classes for lack of a better term right now, so that we can segregate the different gross types. And I think that we can make a lot of progress then.
I have one other question. Probably for legal counsel. But while we can't put a cap on how many are in our city, can we put a percentage per street, per mile, per square mile, or anything of that nature? Like, could you have a street with 100% of these things on?
Unfortunately, no. That would be a strong argument that you are prohibiting them from having a short-term rental.
It's like asking to paint them all red.
Well, you, with some HOAs on condos and townhouses and stuff, you know, you go into an HOA, there can be a percentage that you can rent out. And once that HOA reaches that 15% or 20%...
It's a whole different set of laws, though, yeah. It truly is, yeah.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So you're confident, y'all are confident that we'll target, not target, we're going to confirm, what is the date of the workshop?
September 24th.
And I would encourage the public to, if we've left anything out of this discussion tonight, trying, not being redundant, staff is really good to communicate with staff so that we try to get it as right as we possibly can. And then pass that workshop, just as one. If it needs to go further than that, I don't have a big problem with that, if it needs to. Okay, all right, with that...
How do workshops work? Like, do we come to a workshop?
Staff will help you with that in the back, sir. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to letter G, item number six, I believe it is, and an ordinance, again, of the first read. If council would read that in for me?
Yes. Ordinance 2024-XX approving the 2050 comprehensive plan text and map series for the city of
Mayor, if I can, while staff is getting prepared, we didn't have a presentation attached in your packet, but just hearing your discussion and trying to work through the items, we prepared a few slides to help navigate through the process.
Thank you, city council. Good evening. Hold on a second, Ray. Go ahead.
Sorry, one thing I've overlooked. Since this was a first read, you do need a vote on...
Has anyone had any expertise?
Are we talking about the STR or the comp plan?
The STR.
So do we need to make a motion, or can we make a motion to table it until after the workshop?
Well, we've done, we're talking, it's short-term rentals, right? So what have we done so far? We've just done consensus and given staff some...
Right, but we had this as an ordinance read.
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
Table it, right?
You can table it, and if you want to continue over first read, or you can make a motion to move forward.
I'm going to ask for a motion, as council has indicated.
I would make a motion to table it for now.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion from the public on the motion on the floor? Councilman Clovis, I'm sorry, I neglected you.
Yeah, no, I understood, that's fair. I wish we had just brought this forward in an initial workshop instead of going through this process, but yeah, that's fine, I'm okay tabling it.
Good. So if there is no members of public that would like to address the motion on the floor, I'll come back to the dais, any final discussion? And all in favor of tabling this until... Did the motion have the date in it?
No, Mayor, we would need to have the workshop first, and then get your direction at that workshop of when you would like it on another agenda.
Okay.
So table it to a future meeting.
Future meeting.
Not time-certain.
Were those the words of the motion? I don't remember, future meeting?
You said to table it until after the workshop.
Until after the workshop. Good enough, very good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, city council.
Hold on. Councilor, does that satisfy your requirements? Mr. Tyner.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. At the last public hearing we had, on the transmittal hearing, there was several comments. So I've got a brief presentation, Mayor and city council, to go through regarding the process for a comprehensive plan amendment, specifically for our update of our comprehensive plan that may help, hopefully, alleviate some questions. So I just want to go back, it's a very brief presentation, just to talk about how, you know, last year, well over a year ago, city council directed city staff to engage our public, to go out to our public, to engage them, to see about updating our comprehensive plan. This was a city council SAP priority to get this completed by the year. So you wanted us to go out and try to engage as many people we can. I know you've heard this before, about the community engagement process that we went through for six to eight months. We did our project website, we did pop-up events, civic groups, social media campaigns, press releases. We even had project ambassadors, media coverage, and we gauged approximately 86,000 people. And even to this date, city council, we have our draft goals, objectives, and policies online for our citizens still to continue to comment. Because as we talked about this process, that the comments will not end until the adoption process is complete. So just real briefly, the process of transmitting and adopting a comprehensive plan. So after we reached the public and received a lot of the public comment, as you recall, we created a new vision statement for the city, and we created guiding principles. So we took those guiding principles and the comments that we had from the residents, and we modified our comprehensive plan accordingly. And then what we did after staff and our consultant drafted these proposals, we went to city council on city council workshops. We also went to our Planning and Land Development Regulation Board and our Beautification Advisory Committee as well. And we've held eight public workshops based on our elements and our proposed goals, objectives, and policies. And then after we continued to receive comments from all of these appointed bodies and from our elected officials and from the website, because we continue to get that input and community outreach, we would draft and revise those comprehensive plan policies, objectives, and so forth. And then, once we had kind of a final draft of that, then we went to the Beautification Advisory Committee, and they recommended, their recommended body, especially for our Conservation and Coastal element that we had, our chapter, our infrastructure element in our parks and recreation. And then they made a recommendation to our planning board and to city council to transmit the plan. And then we went on to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board for a transmittal hearing, public hearing with them as well, and went through that draft, and they as well recommended adoption, or not adoption, but transmittal to the state for their review. And then last week, and also tonight, we are at this part of the process where we are asking city council to transmit this document to the agency for their review. We would submit that to the Florida Department of Commerce. They distributed that out to other agencies, such as the Florida Department of Transportation, the St. John's River Water Management District, Northeast Regional Planning Council, and other agencies for their chance to review our draft plan. So at this point of the transmittal hearing, I just want to be real clear, it's not adopting. We don't have a comp plan. It is just a transmittal to the state for their review. And then after the state reviews, what they're going to do is, they're going to provide a report back to us called ORC Report, Objections Recommendation Report. And within that report, they'll have specific comments from each of the different agencies. And then staff and our consultant, we will take those comments, and then we would try to address those comments from the state agency, and then either have another workshop with the planning board, or definitely have another planning board public hearing with them to have their recommendation come to city council. And then we would come back to city council with the state's recommendation and any other comments that we may have or obtain during that period of time. Now, once the state provides us comments, we are required to respond back or to have an adoption hearing within 180 days. Now, we could extend that if the state would allow that, you know, have to have an excuse why we need to extend it. But we do have a time period of 180 days to be able to adopt that plan. And then once that plan comes back to city council, then there's choices, right? You know, you can either, you know, adopt it, not adopt it, or, you know, adopt it with changes. So that is definitely part of the process. And again, so, and then that is just for the comp plan amendment. Then, you know, if the comp plan is adopted, there's a lot of work that's going to be involved of implementing the comprehensive plan through our land development code, and that itself is going to be a year process. For example, tonight, you know, we heard someone comment about buffers on the development of trees. And I could tell you, we heard that a lot from the public. So as y'all, as you recall, on our Conservation and Coastal section, we talked about trees. We talked about reevaluating our... We talked about reevaluating our land development code to look at increasing the buffers in our trees and going through. So there still would be a lot of work to do, and a lot of detail work to do coming within the next year. So we're here, city staff's here for any comments or any discussions.
I'll let you go first. I know you have some questions, so...
I don't have any questions. I do have quite a bit of comments to make. So first of all, let me thank staff and thank the public for all the input. And thank you, staff, for everything that you've done for the comp plan. I expressed concern at the last meeting about the future land use map changes that are being implemented through this comp plan. Currently, out in the westward expansion area, which will end up being about 20,000 acres, if the landowner is able to annex in about 9,000 acres from County Ag that it's intending to annex in. Currently, the two pieces of property that they already own are zoned or are designated as DRIs. So there's current development orders already in place for those two pieces of land. In the future land use map, we are changing that to this new land use category that we've created through the comp plan called the Master Plan Mixed Use. The intent by the developer, by the landowner, is to then change these DRIs, get rid of them, and come to us with a proposed MPD. My concern is accepting the future land use without seeing what they're getting rid of in the current DRIs and what the new MPDs are proposing. So what I did is I went and I looked at 250 pages worth of the current DRI to see what exactly are they getting rid of? Because I don't know, because I didn't read it. And I was floored at what I read. I was disgusted. I was truly sick to my stomach because it has come to my attention that a lot of the infrastructure that the current multi-billion-dollar landowner was supposed to put in for us, taxpayers are paying for. And they are paying for it in the form of state appropriations. Let me be more clear. On page 42 of the Nioga Lakes DRI, which is one of the DRIs out there, it says Palm Coast Parkway Extension. "Not later than the issuance of building permits, which generate 1,400 external PM peak hour trips within the DRI, the developer shall cause to be constructed and dedicated to the city an extension of Palm Coast Parkway from US-1 to Hargrove Grade Road." This is to be called the Palm Coast Parkway Extension. And it goes into detail as to what exactly that road has to look like. It says, "This improvement shall include an above-grade overpass at the intersection of the FEC Railroad and a new mast arm signal at the intersection of US-1 and the Palm Coast Parkway Extension." It then goes on to further explain what exactly is going to be required for Palm Coast's extension. This is the loop road. We got $105 million in state appropriations, also known as tax dollars, to pay for something that in a previous DRI that was entered into in 2010, a private, multi-billion-dollar company should have been paying for. If we go on to page 44, it says Palm Coast Parkway Extension Phase Two. "Not later than the issuance of building permits, which generate 4,754 external PM peak hour trips within the DRI, the developer shall cause to be constructed and dedicated to the city a further extension of the Palm Coast Parkway from the project entrance at Hargrove Grade Lane to the DRI Village Center." And it goes on to provide specifics. This goes on and on and on about improvements on US-1. It affects improvements that are required in the city of Benel, County Road 13 for the county, all kinds of requirements. What really just put the icing on the cake for me. If we go to page 61, Recreation and Open Space. "No later than two years from issuance of the first residential building permit within the DRI, the developer shall commence construction of a public park of up to 29 upland acres, generally located in the area depicted on a map that it describes." And it says that the improvements to be constructed or caused to be constructed by the developer within the public park shall include, but not be limited to, a junior Olympic swimming pool, including changing rooms and restrooms, a playground, and playfields. Here we are, jumping through hoops to try to get a charter amendment passed in order to enter into a public-private partnership for a lease on a sports complex that I think we should look into because of the tourism dollars that can come from it, when all along, this developer, this landowner, is supposed to be paying for it. I am disturbed by this. This is corporate greed at its worst, and it is fallen on the backs of the taxpayer. And I will not stand for it. I am a staunch Republican, and this is not what our policies stand for. So here's what I will state to staff, to the developer, to those representing the developer. You better figure out how you're gonna fix this. When you come back to me, I don't expect $105 million check to the residents of Florida, but I do expect quite a bit in infrastructure improvements. I expect to know what conservation is going to be set aside, what recreation's gonna be set aside, what infrastructure we will get out of this. Because this is a 20,000 swath, 20,000-acre swath of land that is the future of our city. And this developer, that is going to conduct silviculture on it until they decide to build, will make plenty of money. They need to know, I need to know what they're gonna do for our residents. So I don't want to hold up the comp plan because I respect too much the work that you all have done. I respect too much the hours that have been put into this up here and back there. I respect too much what the residents have done to provide their 85,000 comments or whatever it was. I respect this process too much to put off the entire comp plan transmittal. What I will say is, when it comes back from the state, before I even contemplate voting on abandoning those DRIs and accepting an MPD, I want to see exactly what the landowner is going to do. I want to know their plans. I want to know what this is being replaced with. I want to know what these DRIs are being replaced with. I want specifics. I want maps. I don't want to see, oh, well, it can all be mixed-use throughout this 20,000 acres. That is not sufficient. Where are industrial parks? Because in the DRIs, there are requirements for industrial parks. In the DRI, there's requirements that certain workforce housing be constructed prior to the rest of the housing. All of the things that we've said are so important to all of us up here, they're in the current DRIs. When I ask the landowner, "Why do you guys want to abandon these?" And they tell me, "Oh, well, they're not workable." Of course, they're not workable for you. They're workable for us. And I don't work for the developer. I work for the residents. So my, my, I don't want to call it a warning, but my advisement is this. I want to transmit to the state because I think this is an overall good comp plan. But please, please, hold them accountable. Our job as City Council and your job as staff is to hold them accountable to this because this is the future of our city. So as we look at, and I am asking my council, trust me, reading these on my Saturday on the holiday weekend was worse than watching paint dry, okay? But please, 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 take some time and look at these. And let's make sure that the new MPDs, the new development orders that come before us measure up to what we are supposed to be getting out of these DRIs.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Ditto.
Okay, very good.
I don't know how else to say it. But my concern, though, is if we approve this comp plan, what guarantee do we have?
Whoa, 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 hold on. Don't go so far. That's not what she just said. You're not approving anything. You're...
Yeah, we're not approving.
Well, we're not approving it.
No, you're just, you're transmitting it. And what...
We're transmitting it.
What the councilwoman is saying is that she wants to hold them accountable.
I understand that. I heard what she said. I understand it. But even, should we even transmit this at this point?
That's your question.
That's the question.
Okay.
Because are we letting go of an opportunity to fix this? And please answer that.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. I asked the same question of staff and of legal. We had a pretty lengthy meeting about it today because I don't want us to lose our leverage. That's essentially what my concern was. Do we lose leverage over the developer and the landowner if we transmit? I think the answer to that is no, we don't because we still have to accept the new MPD. So what staff just explained is that it gets transmitted to the state, state makes our comments, it comes back. At that time, if they don't have the MPD ready, we say we don't accept.
So I like your warning shot. I think it's dead-on. I think it does send a message. I know that this council will probably vote to transmit this, but I'm gonna give you a no vote tonight as extra leverage that we're serious about.
We don't have a motion yet.
Well, when we have a motion, it will be a no vote for me as extra leverage and as an additional warning shot that they need to clean this up and fix this before we move forward.
So if I may just explain one thing, because I was in agreement with you. The problem is, it's almost like what comes first, a chicken or the egg? In order for them to put forward the MPD, we have to change, we have to send the future land use map to the state. So again, theoretically, in a perfect world, I'm with you. But again, because we're not accepting this, I'm okay with transmitting it to the state. But I just want to make it very clear again, I won't accept it unless we see that they're giving us the hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure they're responsible to us for.
I fully agree.
Councilman Clufus, comments?
Yeah, that's very spot-on. I think it's actually in alignment with what staff presented to us last time we spoke about this as far as direction, specifically the kind of chicken-and-the-egg situation that we got into. So I appreciate the stern warning and tough talks, but I think it's actually continuation of what we elaborated the last time. So yeah, I think holding people accountable is absolute top priority. But the staff, I just want to thank you to Ray's team, all of the time that they've put in. A tremendous amount of work has gone into this. And at this point, transmitting it then gives the council opportunity to critique it and continue this process. This is not by a long shot, anywhere near the finish line, but this is just the first of many steps that need to occur.
Councilwoman, can you put this into a motion so that I can put it out for public comment?
I would ask that the motion come from somebody else. If somebody else wishes to make a motion, I don't wish to make a motion at this point.
Hold on, okay, you don't? You were very fluent, and you had a list of things that, with regard to the DRI. So do you want me to have...
That can't happen yet. That has to wait until it comes back.
No, no, this is the motion regarding the transmittal. And, okay. Councilman Clufus, did you wish to make a motion?
Yes, I did, absolutely. I will move to, I will make a motion as read because we cannot do the other things that were enumerated earlier.
So you're gonna have to...
Motion to approve as read.
As, okay. The advice is, a motion would need to be made as read, as presented by staff.
Okay, yeah, motion to approve as presented by staff, I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second the transmittal of the comp plan, yes.
Very good, okay. Additional discussion by City Council first. Now I will open it up for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to comment on the motion that's on the floor? Go ahead. Come on up. Pull the mic a little closer, just so we can hear. Pull the mic a little closer to you so we can hear you.
It's getting late, and I'm tired. Gina Weiss Quill Harlow. I feel you, Teresa, and thank you. "In aircraft noise management, my Lou control constrains the conversation to only that which supports aviation growth, and it absolutely ignores, suppresses, or downright eliminates knowledge that does not align. In the Comprehensive City Plan of 2025 and Chapter 2 on Transportation, the policy states, 'The city shall support Flagler County's efforts to improve the Flagler County Airport.' The plan's vague use of the word 'improve' does not do anything to address the thousands of city residents suffering from student flight school menace of touch-and-goes with high noise levels and dangerous maneuvers produced by the increased activity of student pilot training schools practicing repeated touch-and-goes all hours of the day and night, holidays, and weekends. The owners of these flight schools, the county, and the airport manager has done nothing to mitigate the intensive noise, along with the safety impact and the dropping of leaded fuel over our homes and environment. To improve this untenable situation, a number of desperate measures should be taken immediately. The flight schools should be performing their touch-and-go maneuvers in areas far away from our densely populated homes and away from populated areas in the community. Also, update the noise map, which was supposed to be updated every five years to assess the pollution level of aircraft noise. I don't know how they got away with this. It hasn't been done in decades. Have curfews. Charge the flight schools a fee for every touch-and-go at our airport. Install sound insulation in existing homes, schools, and hospitals in high-noise areas. The county and the city can request airports to fund or subsidize these programs, therefore demonstrating a commitment to our community's well-being. The winds of change are in the air in Palm Coast. You can see it, and you could feel it, but most of all, you all heard it, the way people are voting. Citizens are no longer supporting those who support developers, home builders, builders, or friends of these individuals. Citizens are voting for representatives who support projects that will benefit the members of our community. More parks, public pools, senior community centers, more green spaces to preserve and protect our flora and fauna, to name a few. Citizens are voting against airport expansion. Does that mean the time is up?
Almost, keep going.
Okay. Far too many years we have been lied to about the flight school noise. Okay, so it's time. As it was said, that only two people are making complaints, and the complaint portal is up to well over 4,000, over 4,000 complaints.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Darlene Shelley, Palm Coast. Ms. Pontieri mentioned 60 decibels of noise. We measure in our yards, and I'm probably a good four or five miles from the airport, decibels of over 65 sometimes. My friend's in the Z-section, over 70 decibels from the airplanes every single day. Short-term rentals in Palm Coast are a big problem, but they're every three, five, seven days. The airport is 24/7, morning, noon, and night, from 7:00 AM until sometimes past midnight. The FAA describes the airport traffic pattern as a rectangular racetrack, but it's much louder and infinitely more consistent than a racetrack. Where are their protections for the residents of Palm Coast? Who outlined this 2050 Comprehensive Plan? It reads as though scripted by landowners, developers, and those who will make a profit from the paving of paradise. One reference to the airport in the 204 pages of the proposed comp plan that I spent my weekend reading, painfully so, is in Chapter 2, Transportation Element Policy 2.1.8.1, quote, "The city shall support Flagler County's efforts to improve the county airport and improve its capabilities in accommodating jet aircraft." That's scary. What does accommodate mean? It goes on to say, for airports in Policy 1.1.9.1.9, "Development of the area identified as Economic Development Area Number 3 of the Airport Area Master Plan shall consider the recommendations of the Airport Area Master Plan in order to ensure the long-term development of the Flagler County Airport." Excuse me, I, it's all chopped up because I wanted to bring up different points as well. "There are over 4,400 noise complaints on the noise abatement portal with no remedy. There are hundreds of daily violations of the fly-friendly guidelines that are in place with no accountability. How about, 'The city shall support the local residents and protect the safety, health, and welfare of its citizens by presenting a policy for the taxpayers and not in the best interest of the developers.'" And there's many, many other concerning things in here as far as supporting multifamily dwellings in residential neighborhoods. That language is so concerning, and I ask you not to transmit this proposal.
Thank you for your comment. Next.
Chantal Pruninger. I didn't get a chance to read the documents for the 2050 Comprehensive Plan Text and Map Series, but I want to thank Teresa for looking into it and seeing that there was a red flag, so that maybe it's not the time to push it forward. a red flag, so that maybe it's not the time to push it forward. And also, where can we find those documents so we can read them too? Where are they?
Staff will give you the contact.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Thank you for your comment, next.
Johnson, Palm Coast. Everyone grab your parka because hell's about to freeze over. I agree with Ed. I mean, seriously, why are we pushing this through and transmitting it to the state when we shouldn't be? And furthermore, I know a lot of work went into this, but how is this such a major oversight that staff didn't see this? I mean, this is literally their job. And we're really playing a risky game as far as the city goes in the future. We're already short with our water treatment, all of our sewage, all of our basic necessities that we need, and we are bringing in twenty thousand acres more of houses in a DRI with zero planning, zero of the amenities, all on the backs of the taxpayers. It's disgusting, it's downright wrong, and it is extremely concerning. I would highly advise that you don't just fire a warning shot, you take this all off the table, you sit there and you redo it from start to finish with good intentions in mind. And quite frankly, I would ask for a hundred and fifteen, or whatever the number is back from the developers, because that's what it's costing us. Everyone sees all these grants money, grants money and all these great things. People don't realize that Florida inland, you get charged every month money for that. That is all taxpayer dollars. Even though it's all this money that's floating around, it's still money that the taxpayers are putting in. And the constant complaint of all the residents is that we keep on seeing tax increases, things cost more money. This is reckless, this is irresponsible, and this is downright wrong, and I would really commend our staff to do a much better job in the future.
Are there any, yes ma'am?
Once more, Councilwoman, Celia Puglisi, here since ninety-one. Once more, Councilwoman Pontieri, we have to appreciate your dedication. I try myself start reading that long, forever-ending pages of this 2050, and honestly speaking, I have no sympathy for it at all, because there are these hidden things, and I noticed some in the little that I read, like, you know, with the airport issue, and also with the cell towers, which was resolved. But it's like, we have, we don't have the confidence. Right now, I am doubting, I'm sorry, we have the expertise of Mr. Tyner, but with this important finding from Councilwoman Pontieri, how come is that it's going to be filed with the state? You know, we live in a state which is practically run by developers. When this goes to the state, they will, ooh, right? And now, what are we gonna get back from there? Are we gonna be obligated because the DRI is decided by the developer to be changed, and we didn't do nothing before we filed with the state? So, I don't know, I have my serious doubts. And also, I am going to say one more here with the people that are close to the airport. I heard today a citizen here. When these people bought around the airport, they didn't have the schools. We don't have a problem with the airport. We don't even have a problem with jet engine in the airport, and having more jet engine business, which is the good thing for the airport. I was here when we didn't have schools of the airport, and when Mr. Darby, Chair of the County Commission, right, and the city was not, they started talking about this in the beginning of the 2000s, and they decided to invite here schools, you know, they can stay here, they can rent, they, oh, listen, I said, you're opening a can of worms. I was the only one speaking against that. There was the Chair, Mr. Darby, on the County Commission, and he had an airport business within the airport, an aircraft business. So, you see, this is what's been going on, and this is the results that we have today. We never had a problem with the airport. Our neighbors bought here confident, their homes, they found a home nice, maybe didn't see the planes at that time because the realtors are pretty smart, probably, I don't know. But we have had this issue with the schools, especially since 2018, it started getting worse after they got all this FAA sixty-nine millions for the airport. So, this has to be resolved. It's five thousand people complaining, and they're having a horrible time there.
Thank you. Next, next speaker.
I sit here and I listen to the discussion on the comp plan, and certainly have read some of it online, and then, of course, it gets turned around to all the noise questions that come up about the airport. But here's a question for you that I don't understand. You can't enforce any of this, okay? Barbara doesn't have a means of doing this. You can set all the decibel levels in the world, but you can't enforce it. How do you enforce it? What mechanism does this city have to enforce a decibel level? Whether it be with neighbors or whatever? Is there a process? I've never found one, I've inquired about it, and I'm told, well, if you call the Sheriff's Department, well, then you have to take it up with the city. And the city doesn't have any means, that I know of, or in the past, has any way to enforce that or know what that is, to be able to put that in some type of quantified method. So, I think before, you know, you guys make all these rules about this stuff, but you guys can't get it to the ground. That's what's the problem with this city, okay? Lots of rules, but you can't get it to the ground. So, I would really suggest that on this comp plan, you leave it right here in Palm Coast and have these guys work on it some more, because this is not ready for prime time. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time?
Jessica Matthews. I wasn't gonna speak tonight. I came here to listen and just take it in and start being more involved, and I just want to thank Councilwoman Pontieri, your true definition of integrity, fighting for what's right, even if it's the unpopular opinion. I am appalled at what I just learned. There's lots of head shaking going on up here, but no one else took their holiday weekend and dove into those papers as she did. We participated, my husband and I participated in the comp plan activities, and yet, many of the things that we noticed, all the little dots we put on boards, all of these games we played, nothing was really in favor of this Western expansion. The Western expansion, it's just something that's being honestly pushed down our throats from certain individuals. We can't take care of the things that we have in place now. How many times has it been said about the water, about the lack of police presence, about the lack of fire presence, of a lack of code enforcement? It is constantly being told to us, and nothing's being done about it. When we were here fighting for Seminole Woods, I'm sure you remember that, just a few months ago, the developer's attorney sat right here and blamed city staff, specifically Mr. Papa, and said it was his fault that there was a mistake missed. I will tell you right now, I approached Mr. Douglas and told him that he should definitely apologize to him, and so should his lawyer, because that was not Mr. Papa's mistake. So my question is, when do we put city staff first? When do we put the residents first? Because all it seems to be is pro-development, and we're missing the residents. Again, a lot of head shaking, but she's the only one who's ever had our support.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment to me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Final comments?
I have no final comments.
I just would like legal to explain kind of what the necessity is once the comp plan, if we decide to transmit, once it comes back, because I expressed the same concerns that we're hearing from the residents, that if we transmit, we're accepting the comp plan, but that seems to be a different process, so if you could explain that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, right now, this is viewed as a proposal that is going to be submitted, that you guys are voting on, that requires a majority vote. If you guys do decide to transmit this tonight, that pretty much says it goes towards the state and all the agencies that Mr. Tyner described. Then, after that, agencies give their comments back, and then we have a hundred and eighty days from that period to decide whether we want to adopt this, make some changes. But we cannot adopt anything, nothing is final until that second reading. This is kind of a first reading right now.
Okay, so my suggestion to state, and I would ask for city council support, I mean, not state, to staff, woo, it's ten forty-one, it's late, and I would ask for city council support on this. When this comes back from the state, this needs to be an incredibly public, heavy process.
Just bear in mind, it's up to a hundred and eighty days, so just...
Right, and that's six months, that's plenty of time.
You could well be the only one here that you're talking to.
No, 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 I understand that, but I guess what I'm looking for from my fellow council members is direction to staff, because that's what we do, we give them policy direction, as to what the public and transparency process will be when this comes back. In other words, when the MPD that these will be, that these DRIs will be applied to be changed to, when those come before us, it needs to be out to the public. We need to be very transparent, we need to have multiple public hearings, in my opinion, on this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, is this, is voting on an MPD quasi-judicial?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, so unfortunately, we can't have a workshop on it, because then that's ex-party communications. We can only do two public hearings for the ordinance. However, the developer can do lots of public meetings and get out into the public and do proposals for what they're suggesting. They can get out to the public and tell them all about the hundreds of millions of dollars that they're going to provide in infrastructure improvements that they are currently bound to in the DRIs. So I would ask that staff please push them to do so, knowing that we up here can only have two public hearings for voting on that MPD, and I promise all of you, regardless of how large that proposed MPD is, I will be picking it apart with a fine-tooth comb and making sure that the residents are represented.
Councilman Clufus, any final comments before I call the vote?
Nope, the city is still in the driver's seat, and I feel like there's a lot of talk right now as if this hasn't been a very transparent and incredibly time-intensive process that we have reached a zillion people, and I hope that continues to be the case, but it's not a change, of course, it's a continuation, of course. But no, that's all I have to say.
Will the clerk call the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to one.
We now move to resolutions under number H.
Ms. Mara, I do have to interrupt, so my apologies, but your policies, procedures, do you require that you adjourn at eleven o'clock unless you have a motion by majority to extend it, or?
So you're...
Just let me get through this, and I'll explain. So you have some options.
Okay.
It's ten forty-four.
Ten forty-four, I'm watching the clock too, I got it.
Yeah, so you can either...
All right, let's do it now.
Okay. I just say, if you cannot get this done, everything done before eleven o'clock, we would need to table these things, a motion to probably the next hearing is what I would...
Well, what I was gonna ask first is I can extend it with consensus till eleven thirty.
Yes, if there is a majority that agree to that.
Yeah, so let me try that the easy way first. Do you all wanna dig through this till eleven thirty, or do you wanna cut it off at eleven?
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
I'm good till eleven thirty.
Councilman Clufus, are you in the same time zone?
I'm in the, I'm in the same time zone.
You're good with eleven thirty?
My one remaining question, though, is why can we not have a workshop on a quasi-judicial issue? I didn't understand that.
Okay, Marcus, go ahead.
It's statutory requirement.
It's a statute requirement, were you able to hear that?
Sure.
It's because of the number of parties that are exchanging information.
Oh, you mean, okay, if the party was actually present.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, essentially, yeah, we're having ex-party communications that could influence the subsequent vote. And so then, presumably, we'd have to disclose all of those communications that occurred at that workshop and certify that none of that influenced our vote, is that...
No, that's very accurate, yes.
I think that's good.
And it's also, you're always welcome to have a workshop and then a business meeting, but that's not required. But yeah, normally, it's generally, we don't do workshops for quasi-judicial.
Councilman Clufus, does that give you a satisfactory answer?
Sure, I think, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. No, I'm, okay. We now move to Agenda Letter H and Resolution, so, Counselor, if you're ready, could read that in for me?
Yes, sorry. Resolution two zero two four dash XX, certifying the 2024 primary election results.
Mayor and City Council?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, this is a standard item in accordance with our city charter to certify the supervisor of elections 2024 primary results.
Are you asking for a motion and a vote here? Okay. Any questions? Councilman Clufus, any questions regarding certification of the primary election just held?
Nope, I'm good.
Then I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, any comments from the public at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to certify.
The Vice Mayor's made a motion to, hold on, to certify the 2024 primary election results.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor, is that, did I say?
Yes, that's what I said, yes.
Okay, and I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to number eight, Counsel, if you'd go ahead and read that in.
Resolution two zero two four dash XX, approving the Old Kings Road Special Assessment role to be transmitted to the Flagler County Tax Collector.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The item in front of you today is for the approval of the annual special assessment on the Old Kings Road taxing district. The annual assessment is for the repayment of road improvements associated with Phase One project. The assessment was first added to the role in 2013, and will remain for a period of thirty years. It is expected to be repaid in 2043. Once approved, the city clerk will send the resolution to the tax collector. Have any questions?
Any questions for Helena?
I have none.
Councilman Clufus, any questions on the item?
Nope.
So let's, let's go ahead and make a motion.
Do you need to send it out to public comment?
I'll do it after the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
To, let's be just a little more specific, to approve the Old Kings...
To approve the assessment role and to the transmitted to the Flagler County.
To the Old Kings Road Special Assessment role, to be transmitted to the Flagler County Tax Collector. Very, well done.
Tax Collector.
May I have a second?
I will second that wonderfully stated motion.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Now I will open it up to the public, yes, sir.
Dennis McDonald, real quickly, you heard me earlier talk about the Sewer and Water Enterprise Fund. This money for the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District, none of you were around in this city at the time. This six million dollars came out of the Sewer and the Water Enterprise Fund. We tracked it, we know exactly where it came from, when we had our meeting with Chris, you know, many, many years ago, we found everything, and it was all done with a forensic CPA, okay? So we know where it was, we know what it is, and so you're seeing the result of it now. You took six million dollars out of the Sewer and Water Fund at least ten years ago, I think that was 2010 or twelve or something like that. Imagine what it would have grown to at this point and what we could be using it for right now, but yet we're lending it out and losing money because there's a process and an equation that you can run that actually shows you how much money you lose when you lend it out, you know, today and collect it over a term was, I believe, 2043. Ridiculous, it hurt us.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, then I guess I will ask the clerk to call the vote. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We now move to item number nine under letter H, which is, Counselor, if you'd read it in for me?
Resolution two zero two four dash XX, approving final nuisance abatement assessment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. You first heard this item on July sixteenth, that's when we send out the initial nuisance abatement. Just as a reminder, nuisance abatement is when the city has to rectify an issue and then bills the property owner. They have an opportunity to pay that bill. If they don't pay the bill, we put it on the tax roll and collect it that method. Since the initial roll was done in July, we've collected some funds, the remaining funds that are gonna go on the tax roll are a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five.
Questions for Mr. Di Lorenzo? Councilman Clufus, Councilman Clufus, any questions?
Nope, I have none.
All right, let's do the same process, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion approving the resolution which approves the final nuisance abatement assessment.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Pontieri has made the motion, Vice Mayor Danko has seconded. Councilwoman Pontieri has made the motion. Vice Mayor Danko has seconded. Any further discussion? I will, let's see, we've already been out to the public. I'm sorry, we have not. Nuisance debate, we have not. I will open this up to the public for comment.
Okay, these nuisance abatement welcome funds that are collected, on which account are they going to be going?
I'll let staff answer your question. Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Let's follow the same procedure and do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We've already covered item number 10.
Mayor, did you want Jason to answer?
He's answering. He can do that.
We do need a vote for item number 10 because it's accepting a grant.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do that before. Okay.
Took the check and ran.
We dwell. Stop that. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make that a motion to take the check and run.
Would you like to mention the amount?
What was it? Was it $5,000? Yeah, it was $5,000. I'll make a motion to accept the $5,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Any further, any further discussion? Let me put it out to the public. I don't think we did that earlier. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the acceptance of the fine grant for the waterway cleanup? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager, for catching that for us. Now we'll move to number 11. And Counselor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Resolution 2024-XX, approving a construction contract, project contingency and construction engineering inspection services for the Old Kings Road Forest Main Improvement Project.
Good evening, Council. Alex Blake, City Palm Coast Utility Engineer. So this project involves a trunk line force main. It's a large trunk line, 24-inch. The main purpose of this project is to facilitate the pumping capabilities of three existing master pump stations. It will be constructed in the Old Kings Road corridor just south of Utility Drive and down Utility Drive. So the entire length of it is about 1.7 miles. It will be contained mostly in a existing utility, but on the east side of Old Kings Road. So we don't expect hardly any, you know, traffic impacts or such, you know, to inconveniences to the public. Additionally, it's also mostly horizontal directional drill, which is a trenchless technology that will also limit impacts to the community while the construction's being done. There's a little bit of work on the intersection of the Old Kings Road and Utility Drive that would have to be done, probably going to be night work, be closed down most likely to one lane for a few days. And aside from that, it, you know, we've been wanting to do this project for quite some time. And this is really just the construction phase of something that was approved earlier for this, which was the design of the project.
Questions from city council members?
I have none.
Councilman?
No questions, thank you.
And Councilman Clufus, anything particular to this? No? Okay, then I would ask for a motion. We'll use the same process again.
I'll make a motion to approve this construction contract for the Old Kings Road Forest Main Improvement Project.
Thank you, sir.
I will second.
And so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So let me open it up to the public. Any comment from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Celia Palm Coast, again, I see this is a sizable project, like over a mile. So how much is the cost of that?
$5.2 million.
I could imagine it wording to millions. Okay, so I guess this comes out of the enterprise utility fund, right?
It is partially funded through ARPA funding, which is $2.5 million in American Rescue Plan, the remainder of which is existing capital monies for this scheduled project, yes.
So we had a grant, that's a good thing.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And I think a voice vote would be sufficient here. All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to letter I on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. So I'll go first to city council. Was there a question?
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment on number 14. I want to give kudos to procurement. It appears the initial contracts that you all entered into did not include a few necessary components. You went back and got us a better contract that did include all the necessary components. So I know procurement has been taking a lot of heat lately from the public, so I want to commend you on getting a full contract, making sure that we're protected and getting everything that we are bargaining for. So thank you for that.
Thank you for your comment. Councilman Clufus, any comment on the consent agenda?
No, I have no items on the consent agenda.
So I'll open up the consent agenda now for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Please come forward.
All these consent agendas, I think, like I just found that sizable cost. And I hope that for the best interest of the taxpayers, each of these contracts that get for government work will go through the three beats at least necessary to work out the best prices for our dollar.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we're back here. And the vice mayor's made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Any further discussion?
None, from me.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
We now conclude with final public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a final comment on any item that was not previously discussed on
Counsel, Dennis McDonald. The reason that I made a point of coming back, I wanted to do some research to make sure that I was in the right spot here. So one of the things that I saw take place earlier was this vote on the referendum, okay, where Mr. Danko and Councilman Pontieri voted no, and there were two votes that were yes. But yet what I recalled from having read over the city charter again recently because of another issue, was when I came to item eight, city council meetings, organizational meeting, quorum, and special meetings. When you go to 8B, it simply says, "Quorum. A majority of the council, including the mayor, shall constitute a quorum. No action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by an affirmative vote of the majority of the council members and the mayor in attendance." Okay? Tonight, we have Mr. Clufus on some telephone, okay, and all of us, and I had many people in the hallway, you know, comment to me, Clufus is cutting in and out. You could hear, you know, he was obviously had it on some type of mute situation. We can't see him. We don't even know if that's Mr. Clufus. So here's what else it says. It says, "All actions of the city council shall be by ordinance resolution." Okay? I don't know of an ordinance or a resolution that allows you to have Mr. Clufus on a telephone. Okay? I mean, this is simply bizarre. You had a two-to-two vote. It was a really important vote. You saw the people that were here. They were really angry about this. And it just rubbed me wrong. So here's what I did. I asked my wife, who spent eight years on the school board, and she told me that any time that she called in, she could participate in the meeting, okay? That's what the attorney said and the state said. But her vote did not count because she was not in attendance. So I don't know exactly what's going on here tonight. I know that there's a lot of things that you don't pay attention to when you get advice from your attorney. I've watched that happen a couple times. But I'm telling you, you're in violation of your charter, as I see it. So unless you can come by some ordinance or resolution that shows us how Mr. Clufus can vote on some remote telephone, cutting in and out with his mute button on, okay, I think you have a two-to-one vote, is what you have, okay? And putting that forward to the SOE and putting it on a federal ballot, I think would be a huge mistake on your part. So I think you need to call that vote back or call it for what it is. It was two-to-one.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to comment? Final comments for this evening? Seeing none, I will come back to city council. Any final comments this evening?
I just want a clarification from our attorney on what we just heard from Mr. McDonald.
So we'll refer to Robert's rules, I would think.
There is an attorney general opinion that states that if your policies and procedures do not require your person to be in person to vote, you are allowed to appear by virtual as long as you have quorum in the room. Tonight, we had three people out of five present. Therefore, Mr. Clufus can appear virtually and vote.
Thank you.
And I don't ask it for this particular reason, but we've done this, you know, it started with COVID, obviously, but then we've done this in the past with various...
No, 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 no. No, it started back, started back with the original charter.
Right, but I remember, though, we really did it a lot during COVID, before you were here, obviously.
Twenty-five years.
Procedure. So, you know, I just wanted a clarification. Thank you.
Councilwoman, any final?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nor do I. So I'll go to, Counselor, any final comments for this evening?
None for me.
Thank you for your help this evening. City Manager?
Yes, sorry, I have one.
I apologize. You... I was cutting in and out, I'm sure.
Well, I don't want to hear it. Any final comments tonight, please? Yes?
No, no comments from me. I'm just curious whether or not there's...
That's good, Nick, because we said you could vote, but you don't get to comment at the end.
City Manager, please proceed.
I was just wondering, Mr. McDonald of the county office, but I mean, it's okay.
City Manager, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, last week, we had the joint city-county workshop, and we discussed several topics, one of those being the request to use law enforcement impact fees. It was at the Board of County Commissions discretion of using those impact fees, that $87,000 that the sheriff's office budget was reduced by this council. I'm seeking policy direction. If you would like to have those monies back into your budget for Thursday's hearing, we could take that direction and then go forth with that.
Councilwoman, you had a strong opinion on that. Would you like to go ahead and offer direction, and then we'll consents?
Yeah, so I had wanted the $87,000 to come from the impact fees that the county holds for us that we collect. And upon looking at the internal agreement that we have with them, it states that those impact fees can only be used for capital construction. So we cannot use them to offset the growth-related costs of the sheriff's new contract. So I don't want to shortchange the sheriff. He didn't ask for any new deputies last year. He is this year. I think with our growth, we need it. I will make the comment that this is another cost of growth that unfortunately our general fund is paying for. But I do think that the contract needs to be funded. So I would suggest to council that the monies be put back in. That's my stance on it.
I'm fine with it.
Very good. So does that help you?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We'll make the adjustments for Thursday's presentation.
Anything else?
No, Mayor.
Councilman Clufus, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Hey, I will motion to adjourn.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor. We are adjourned.